Some order around the table, we'll get our meeting going. It's okay. We've started. I guess I need a bigger gavel, but I'll, we'll, uh, we'll work on that for the new year. Anyway, thank you, everybody. And I hope everyone had a nice holiday. It's good to see everyone back. And, uh, let's see. Six, seven, we have, uh. Okay, so we will let the record show that we have all of our counselors in attendance, with exception of Counselor Hoppy, and she is not with us tonight. We hope that she recovers quickly. We will start, as we usually do, our public meetings with a citizen comment on any item that is on the agenda. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if anyone is here who would like to speak, you may do so now. And do we have anyone online who's raised their hand and would like to speak today?
I don't see anyone with their hand up, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. We will then conclude our citizens' right to speak. And our first item, we have three, uh, two items, agenda items. One is a Jefferson County Public Health update. Our second item is liquor license festival permits. So why don't we go with agenda item number one? And, uh, Michelle, do we have a presentation?
Very good. We do, Mayor. Yes, we have a number of professionals from Jeffco Public Health here, a number of staff to give us some updates. So I'm hoping that they can all turn on their cameras and join us on Zoom. And I'm going to ask Christine, I didn't have Elise on my list. Is Elise with Jeffco Public Health? And should I make her a panelist as well? Perfect. Thank you very much. Well, welcome, staff of Jeffco Public Health. Let's just do a check on the screen up here. Yep, they're all right there. And, um, let's see, I think this is everybody joining. I don't know who's, who's going first. I believe that we're kicking off with a COVID update, and that is over to Ms. Christine Billings. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I will go ahead and get started, as I know you packed a lot of our updates into a very short timeframe for this evening. I am sharing my screen. Sorry it's in this weird PowerPoint mode. I have yet to figure out how to do Zoom in presentation mode without you seeing all of the stuff that you don't need to see. So I have, excuse me, my apologies for that. I am here this evening to give you a quick update on our COVID data and where we stand with the response and ongoing efforts to mitigate COVID-19 to the best of our ability in Jefferson County. So a quick update for this evening. I am using the base population of 586,000 for Jefferson County. As of the 30th of December, and I can guarantee this number has risen as of today, we just don't have that data yet. We are at 18.8% positivity rate on a seven-day average. That means approximately one in five individuals who are testing for COVID-19 are testing positive. This is not unexpected considering we are dealing with the Omicron variant. It is estimated that over 90% of the circulating virus in the state of Colorado can be attributed to Omicron. It's highly contagious, highly infectious, and all of the numbers that you will see are a result of the variant Omicron of COVID-19. Our 14-day average daily hospitalization rate is super encouraging. We are at 1.2, which means that 1.2 per 100,000 persons, residents of Jefferson County are hospitalized for COVID-19. That number is on a lag due to the way that the hospitalization data comes into Jefferson County. So please note that the date range for that is the 14th through the 27th of November. Our seven-day case counts, as of yesterday, we were up to 953.5 per 100,000. That far, far exceeds the highest number we had at the peak of the wave last November in 2020. And that will be seen on a graph coming up. So this graph, again, this was updated as, through data as of the 30th. The incident rate that I provided in the previous slide is not shown on here. But you can see this case, this line right here is a case count of 600 per 100,000. So we would be well up, probably where my face bubble is, way up here at the top of the screen, if we were to be able to continue graphing this. This graph is available on the Jefferson County Public Health website. It is updated once a week due to the changing data that we have. So the next update of this will be, actually be done at the end of this week on Thursday evening. So look for an update, look for a very high spike at the end of this graph. This graph shows a comparison of 2021, which is the green line right here, and 2020, the difference in case counts. As you can see, we were somewhat mirroring the spike that we saw last November. And now we are far exceeding that due, again, to the Omicron variant, which is so highly contagious. And that is why we are seeing such a high, high rate of disease within Jefferson County. This is by age group. So again, this data is as of last Thursday, December 30th. This shows the case incident rates by age group. This box right here is our zero-to-four-year-olds. These are the ones that can't be vaccinated yet. So they are relying on those who encircle them, family members, caregivers, the general public, to prevent, prevent the spread of disease within this population. As you can see, their case counts are quite high. Our five-to-11-year-olds, which recently became eligible for COVID-19 vaccine, their rates are just a little bit lower. So we are starting to see a little bit of the implementation of that, that new vaccine coming into that population. And then we have our 12 to 19, and then our 20-plus. So all of these age groups are at a very, very high number. The one that is concerning is, of course, the, the older adults in this 20-plus years range, and then those that cannot be vaccinated. This is just a visualization of our hospitalization rate. So the, the positive out of, out of all of this incredible amount of disease that we have circulating within the community is that our hospitalization rates are on a decline. We've kind of been bouncing around right in the middle of the, the one and a half, 1.5 per 100,000 rate for a little bit of time. Again, this is, this data is on a lag, so it will be updated at the end of this week with data from last week. On a whole, the region is seeing a slight uptick in hospitalizations. For Jefferson County, the positive news is, as of the 30th, we were on a slight decline compared to where we were with this steady climb from really the summer through the beginning of December. This is our hospitalization rate by age group. So you can see with this graph, this top line here represents our community members who are above the age of 70. This is the population who is being greatly impacted with severe COVID-19 disease, which is resulting in hospitalization. When this graph gets updated, you will continue to see this trend going on, that our older adults are the ones who we are seeing hospitalized and are seeing unfortunately pass away from the disease. These are a couple disclaimer slides. I'll make sure that Allison gets a copy of these. I'll put it in the PDF. This is vaccination status. These are the data limitations. We always include these. I will not read them at this time, but they will be included in a, the PDF version of this slide. Super awesome news. I am very pleased to report that Jefferson County has achieved over 80% of our eligible residents, so those are age five and above, to, for at least one dose of our COVID-19 vaccine. And of those five, we also have 5.4% who are only partially vaccinated within this 80, 80.5. Very, this number is fantastic, absolutely fantastic. Another great positive news, 41.2% of those who just became eligible for vaccine have at least one dose of that, that vaccine onboard. Great shout out to our 30 to 39-year-olds. That age group has crested over 90%. They are at 91.2%. So overall, the population is doing a really good job of getting vaccinated to protect themselves against COVID-19. You will start to see in the coming, probably not this week, likely next week, we will start to tease out the data on the Jeffco website a little bit more to show that added booster dose. So that third dose of vaccine or second dose of vaccine, if someone has been vaccinated with the Johnson &amp; Johnson. This is just a different visualization of the data on the previous slide. The darker green bars here are those who have been vaccinated. And this light green area at the top are those that we need to continue to vaccinate in order to achieve 100%. Just a different visualization again of those on the other slide. So again, going back to the, the severity of illness, you will start to see a shift as we move into endemic disease with COVID-19, a focus on hospitalizations and deaths. Where are those occurring? Where, where are we getting them? What is the population that is, that's being so impacted by hospitalization and death? Again, the rate of disease in our community is off the charts. There is a lot of disease out in Jefferson County and across the state of Colorado, and really the nation, due to the Omicron variant. And all of that circulating virus is leading to hospitalizations and deaths within our community. This graph in particular shows that the vaccination is protective against hospitalization and death. This blue box represents cases per 100,000 of fully or fully plus vaccinated individuals who have been hospitalized, and the green bar is the rate of disease, rate of hospitalization, excuse me, among those who were not vaccinated or only partially vaccinated. To put these into numbers, they are down here at the bottom of the slide. So the rate per 100,000 of those who have no vaccine or, or only partially vaccinated is 275 per 100,000. And the rate for those who are fully or fully plus vaccinated is 52.9. When you go over to deaths, you see a similar ratio. You have 56.2 per 100,000 of our unvaccinated community members who are dying due to COVID-19, and 11.9 among those who are fully vaccinated. We're doing a deep dive across the nation into this bucket right here, why our fully vaccinated individuals are passing away. And that is where our therapeutics come online with monoclonal antibodies. So making sure that as soon as someone tests positive, we can get them into the therapeutics to help protect them from ending up in this blue box and this green box. The CDC, of course, during the holiday week released a press release saying that they have shifted the recommendation for quarantine and isolation time based upon the, the changing data due to Omicron. We know that this has been confusing to several individuals. The guidance is lagging in being updated. And so I have taken the press release, what we have received from the State Health Department, and put it onto this slide. I know there is a lot of, of text on here. I apologize for that. But in essence, if someone tests positive for COVID-19, their day zero starts on the day of their symptom onset or on the day of their test, if they are undergoing routine testing and they were without symptoms at the time of that test. If they test positive, they need to go for five full days in isolation. The previous guidance was 10 days. That has been reduced for five days. They can return to work or routine activities on day six if their symptoms have greatly appro, greatly improved as of day five, and they have gone 24 hours fever-free without the use of medication. They also must continue to wear a mask for an additional five days. That is within their home, wherever they are, around any other person, if they are not completely isolated by themselves. Again, Jefferson County has an indoor mask mandate, so that should cover, but diligent, diligent mask use for that additional five days. Quarantine gets a little more complicated. The unvaccinated must quarantine for a full five days, non-negotiable. That person can return to work or routine activities on day six, but they must wear a mask for an additional five days. It is strongly advised that they test on day five before returning to those routine activities. That also applies to are partially vaccinated. So someone who may have received only one of that two-dose primary series, they too must quarantine for a full five days if they are determined to be a close contact. They may return to routine activities on day six, but they must wear a mask for additional five days. And again, it is strongly advised that they test on day five. Now, the vaccinated bucket. If someone is beyond the six months from that final completion date of that primary vaccine series, and they have not received a booster dose, that person must also quarantine for that full five days, routine, return to work on day six, and mask for an additional five days. That is, again, beyond the six months from completion of that primary COVID-19 vaccine series, and they do not have that booster dose. Vaccinated individuals who are within that six-month date of the completion of their primary COVID-19 vaccine series do not need to quarantine. They should wear a mask for 10 full days, and it is strongly advised that they test on day five after exposure. Vaccinated individuals who are beyond that six months but have received a booster dose also do not need to quarantine. They should wear a mask for 10 full days, and it is strongly advised that they test on day five. This is a summary of the CDC press release. I know it is a lot of text. It has led to great confusion. For that, I apologize. We are awaiting guidance. So my huge disclaimer to that is that we are waiting for CDC and the State Health Department to release sector-specific guidance. So the above is subject to change as we receive further information. Sector-specific guidance, one of them that we are definitely waiting on is our schools. But they are also releasing healthcare guidance, congregate living guidance. The sectors that they have addressed previously, they will address again. So this will likely change, but for now, this is what I have. And this was my best at translating a press release into something that's a little more user-friendly. So that's all I have. I don't know if we are taking questions, if someone could let me know that. That would be great. If not, I will yield to my other public health colleagues to present their information.
Thank you much, Christine, and for very nice report. I think we will stop right now and see if there are any questions from council. Any questions for, on our COVID report? If no one else has one, I have one, Christine. Would you please speak about the difference between isolation and quarantine?
Absolutely, Mayor. So the, the primary difference, isolation applies to someone who has the disease. And we want to go ahead and keep that person away from all other people to help stop the spread of disease. So isolation applies to those who, who have current and active disease. Quarantine applies to those who have been exposed to a virus, be it COVID-19 or measles. I will knock on wood for that one as well. Anyone who has been exposed, we go ahead and quarantine them for the length of time that it will take to develop disease, just in case they develop symptoms, because we want to stop spread of disease. So someone who is exposed but is not developed disease yet is in quarantine. So that's the primary difference. You have someone who's, who has the disease, keep them away from others. Someone who is exposed and may develop disease, we also keep them away from others.
Thank you very much. That makes a lot of sense. And I had one more question. Early in the, in the COVID last year, about this time or earlier, we were talking about a term called the R-not factor, which was sort of the transmissibility of the virus. I haven't heard that term in many months now. Has that gone out of vogue? Or is there, are we talking about it in a different way, or do you have it?
Yeah, no, the, the term is still being used. When we had the circulating Delta virus, which was the primary virus prior to Omicron, we were looking at around slightly over one for, for Delta. It is estimated, I haven't seen the most recent numbers, but it is estimated that Omicron has an R-not similar to measles, which is about 18. So really, really high, which is why we are seeing this huge, very large case count for COVID-19 in the community.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's a big number. Maybe that's why we're not talking about it.
A little scary.
Yeah, it is. Okay, well, thank you very much. Any other questions, Ms. Noslerbeck, and then Ms. Hulteen?
Thanks, Christine, so much. I was just, while we were, while you were talking, Jeffco Public School Superintendent sent out another email talking about quarantining and isolation and talking about those definitions that you're just going over, because I think that is really confusing. With Omicron being more contagious, I guess is just the way that I understand it. Does, up till this point with, like, students in classrooms, you know, the schools weren't making people, you know, go and quarantine for the whole school or the whole class. Are we going to see more, like, school closures? And we're going to be doing remote learning now with Omicron because it's more contagious and people can catch it? Or is that something that could happen because of it being a different kind of strain and more contagious, like measles?
Yeah, we work very closely with Jeffco Public Schools along with our private school partners. And one of the consistent messages and driving factors that we have had since the start of this school year is to preserve in-person learning. So my team meets weekly with the school district, with Jeffco Public Schools, and my team of EPIs meets ongoing with our private school partners as well to look at the ongoing data, look at the rate of disease that we are seeing within the school community, and balancing that with preserving in-person learning. So what you have seen is probably a reduction in those high-risk activities. My guess is that for the first week of school, Jeffco Public School students will see a reduction in that high-risk activity, singing, choir, those, you know, the athletic activities where there is a greater risk of a spread of disease. What has not changed is the definition of a close contact. So when you talk about a whole classroom closures and whole classroom mitigation, we are, the, the definition of a close contact has not changed. And so when those students are fully masked with, with tight-fitting masks, it is recommended that, that students go back to school, especially for these first two weeks coming out of the holidays, with the tight-fitting masks, you know. Sorry.
Yeah, nobody's happy about it.
Those tight-fitting masks, just to really, really help your individual student through these first couple weeks of school, that is also being recommended. So the, the close contact definition has not changed. So when we have a positive case, we look for those close contacts, we send the exposure notifications, and we go from there. So I do not see that coming. That being said, if we have an outbreak with a lot of disease, we will have those one-on-one conversations with the schools.
And just one follow-up question. So with the, with the masks, I'm just asking honestly, as a parent, right now, is the preference, like, are people being encouraged not to use cloth masks? Is it like the N95s, or what kind of masks? Should we, well, like, can we just look to?
Yeah, the guidance and recommendation, and even for me, I'm a mom of three, I have a college student and two high schoolers. You know, those, those N95s that are tight-fitting, rather than those cloth masks that kind of have gaps and, and tend to fall down a little bit more, or a mask that truly does not fall down, so that it is not exposing their, their airways as often as it could. That is the recommendation, a tight-fitting mask, especially for these first two weeks. So if you can locate an N95 or a KN95, that would be the, the recommendation. Again, Jefferson County Public Health, my disclaimer to the N95s, if you are not fit tested, they do not act necessarily as a true N95, but they are better filtration and air purification than a cloth mask.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your time tonight updating us on this. I've got, I've got, my first question is, you presented some data that demonstrated the differences in hospitalizations and deaths between vaccinated and unvaccinated. Is there any data at the county level in terms of rates of infection between vaccinated and, and unvaccinated, or partially vaccinated and vaccinated?
Yes, I can include that slide. So when I send this over, I will add that slide into the PowerPoint deck. And I can send that over. I don't have it pulled up right now, but we do have that as well.
Great. I appreciate that. Then my second question, sort of going off of what Ms. Nosler Beck was discussing, I'm actually a little bit curious about the the process that Jefferson County Public Health is is utilizing for sort of responding to and managing COVID. Like, what is your agency coordination, both from the state to the county and the county to local governments? And then other agency partners like the schools like you touched on?
I'll try to answer that from my understanding of your question. So local authorities, local public health directors, so our executive director, Dr. Comstock, has the authority to enact local, local public health orders. That being said, I have worked for the county for 14 years and I know that well prior to that, we have worked very hard in the Denver metro area and really across the state to align efforts as best as possible with our local public health partners. Because we know that disease does not stop at a county border. Just because it's in Jeffco doesn't mean it might not necessarily cross boundaries into Denver, Boulder, Broomfield or Douglas County. And so the executive directors work together to align align efforts as best as possible. Keeping in mind that we will always do what's best for Jefferson County based upon Jefferson County data. At some times, there are public health orders, rules, rules and requirements that come from the state health department down to the locals. I can never be less restrictive than the state. I can always be more restrictive than the state. And so our executive director and even me at my level, we work with the state health department, with our our colleagues over there to really understand the guidance, to relay, this is what it looks like at the local level? Can we tweak that a little bit so that it makes a little bit more sense? Or, hey, we're really, really searching for something related to this. Can you loop back around with us? My program in particular was based out of emergency preparedness and response. The evacuations that you saw out of the fires and boulder of the health and medical facilities, that is decades of training, planning, preparedness and looping back around and doing it again. Those relationships are what is feeding our response to the COVID pandemic. So there is this hierarchical structure by by state statute and state law. And there's also years and years of the same people being represented at your local health department interacting with the colleagues around the Denver metro area. So it's it's twofold. One, it's a structure and two, it's just decades of of hard work based on what we do every day at the health department when COVID is not here.
Well, I just, I want to thank you. That was a great response and demonstrates, you know, you've done a tremendous job of responding and working with our city and communicating with our community. So I just want to thank you for for both your professionalism and your dedication to your work. It's reflected really well. And we're just really grateful to have so many dedicated professionals working on our behalf.
Hey, thank you. And I was born at Lutheran Hospital, so I feel a little bit tied to Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. That makes you a native. Counselor Ohm?
Yeah, I have one question. For the for those that do the home test kits and and test positive, is that somehow put into your data? Or are those people reporting their positivity? Or would the the graphs be much higher?
Yeah, so they should be reporting their positive rates. There is a link on the CDPHE website where those test results should be reported. That being said, we definitely recognize that there is a under-reporting of positive disease out in our community. So that 18.8% positivity, that number is likely different. That number comes from what is reported. It is required that COVID-19 test results are reported to the state health department. And so, you know, we we recognize that that likely does not happen 100% of the time. So we do know that there is an under-reporting of of positive tests. That being said, there's likely an under-reporting of negative tests. And so it it most likely balances out on the other end. We have well over 8,000 tests a week being conducted across the community at those community test sites that are sponsored by local sites around the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any further questions? Ms. Nosler Beck?
This is probably a question you hear a lot, but do we know when we might get access to more tests?
Well, that is a lucky, lucky question that I get to try to answer. We do not know. We do our best to maintain the ability for individuals to be tested at the larger community test sites. They have not reached capacity in terms of testing. And so that is, that is the the best practice, number one way to go. We do have the federal government, I heard on a call last week, is working to procure 500 million of those rapid at-home tests and are working on a plan to get those out across the nation. We do not know what that's going to look like yet. It may be that it's a direct mail to everyone who has a United Postal Service mailing address. Or it could be that you log into a portal and request those. So I I don't have any idea really of when there are more coming. But I do know that there is the ability to be tested at these community sites with that gold standard PCR test at the at the community site. So I would strongly encourage folks to definitely go that route. If you can't find a rapid test, don't let the inability to find a rapid test at this point in time stop you from getting tested, especially if you're dealing with the public or if you are dealing with those who are at risk for severe disease.
Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How do this year's hospitalization and death rates compare to like last year's surge?
So the hospitalization and death rates compared to last year's surge are mirroring in terms of peaking. The the numbers themselves at the height of our peak that we saw in the one graph that I presented is slightly below what we saw last year. That being said, capacity in our hospitals, your local hospital of Lutheran, St. Anthony's, capacity in the hospitals is really, really tiny right now. It is about 2% availability of beds within Jefferson County at this point in time. And that's a really small number. That is due to staffing, that is due to an increase in other diseases that our hospitals are seeing due to people delaying care over the last, last year of the pandemic. And so it's this perfect storm, not to use a term, but perfect storm of delayed care and then just increased level of severity due to the rapid amount and the large amount of disease we have in the community.
All right. Well, listen, Christine, thank you very much for a really interesting presentation. And once again, thank you so much for the work that you do for for the citizens in Jefferson County. It's been obviously a real struggle and a, you know, and a real learning experience in in trying to trying to stay healthy. So thank you very much for helping us to try to stay healthy and we will do everything we can. So thanks so much.
Yep. And I will add that slide and get them sent over.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Our next item is mental health and substance abuse treatment, and I will turn it over to the JCPH staff. Not sure who's carrying the ball on this one.
Hello, everybody. I can get that one started. My name is Michael Miller. I, oh, I got to share a screen option now. Give me just a moment here. I'll get things kicked off and then hand it off to my colleagues. All right. Sarah, can you see my screen? Okay, cool. Hi, everybody. Again, my name is Michael Miller. I am the opioid initiatives coordinator with Jefferson County Public Health. I use he/him pronouns. I'm also a person in sustained recovery from an opioid use disorder, and I find that kind of important to share when starting some of these conversations. Excited to be with y'all tonight and appreciate the opportunity to chat with you about this. So real quick about us, Jefferson County Substance Use Partnership. In 2018, Jeffco Public Health secured funding from CDPHE, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, to facilitate and create the Jefferson County Substance Use Partnership, which is a, it's a collective impact coalition focused on improving outcomes for people who use drugs, people in recovery, and support the community partners who serve them. And we do this a couple of different ways, through community education and awareness, through multi-sector collaboration with a bunch of different types of stakeholders ranging from treatment providers, recovery residence operators, people in recovery themselves, to law enforcement, criminal justice system, our county commissioners, our county coroner, folks like that. And then we facilitate trainings in the community and with our partners and stakeholders. And then we we help steward collaborative initiatives forward. So the Coalition, the Jefferson County Substance Use Partnership, has developed a couple of really great initiatives as a result of being able to come together and collaborate. And I'll share some of those here in a second. And then we also support other agencies and community organizations within Jefferson County to kind of try to locate substance use funding, because sometimes it can be a little bit tricky to find, but there's a decent amount of it out there at the moment. So just a real quick overview of our our programs and our initiatives. So Jefferson County Substance Use Partnership, like I mentioned, our current major initiatives are a county-specific data dashboard, which will be very, very important here in a second, because I'm about to share some overdose data with you about the county. But we'd like to be able to peel back and look even deeper at the rates of overdose, substance use-related data, recovery data within our communities so that we can figure out what's working well, expand on it, and also figure out where there might be any gaps. Also, I apologize. I feel a little unprofessional. I'm in a beanie tonight. I'm a little bit sick, so I'm freezing. This is the only way I can do this. Please forgive me. And as I mentioned, we do that community and partner education. We also have the opportunity to work with AmeriCorps opioid response members. One of which, one of our previous members will be sharing here in a second. Miranda really cut her teeth as an opioid response member and then is moving on to do some really great things with our agency as well. Sarah will talk a little bit about our law enforcement assisted diversion pilot in Lakewood, I believe. And then we're also expanding our peer support capacity within Jefferson County's clinic. And so that's that's people with lived experience, people in recovery, people that have experience with mental health issues, helping walk others through a path towards health, more improved health outcomes towards recovery. We're also in the really early stages of working with Dr. Cannon in the coroner's office to develop an OD fatality review board. Again, to expand the breadth and depth of our knowledge about what's happening in Jefferson County around overdose and substance use so that we can be more creative and impactful in the ways we attempt to address it. And then we also do data collection, talk about data sharing agreements and try to coordinate some of those data collection efforts. So really quickly, I wanted to share some overdose data with this group. This is overdose data from between 2015 and 2020, and this is accessible on CDPHE's overdose data dashboard. That should have been included in some of the links that y'all received previously. If not, I'll make sure to include those links and instructions along with this slide deck. You can see on the first graph there on the left, the overall count of overdose deaths. Did any drug in Colorado between 2015 and 2020? A really significant jump between 2019 and 2020. Just quick caveat, 2020 is the most recent data we have really solid numbers on. We're expecting to see a little bit more as we get into 2022 about data from 2021. Also, that's hopefully where the the OD fatality review board can can be of some assistance to get us a little bit more real-time access to data. So you can see that the total number of overdose deaths for that five-year period was 639. And then the crude rate per 100,000 residents was 18.5. The the big thing here to notice is obviously this really significant spike between 2019 and 2020. Unfortunately, kind of similar to Christine's graph around COVID case counts. We're expecting this number to be really, really high for 2021 and 2022, unfortunately. So again, overdose is one of our most significant local challenges. Another local challenge is limited access to care, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second, but specifically limited access to withdrawal management. Really the only accessible option for people who are dependent on substances physically and will experience kind of really horrific withdrawal symptoms if they try to quit using drugs is to attend a social detox where where you kind of just kick quote-unquote cold turkey. The outcomes for that are pretty dismal. It's it's really hard to get through that type of process as opposed to a medical detox, which is often 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 offered in private treatment settings, which makes that a much more sustainable process and improves outcomes on the backend for those folks as well. And again, limited access to appropriate care and support. The majority of the residential treatment providers, so places where you actually go and stay for 30, 60, 90 days, where that's medically appropriate are private and accept self-pay or insurance. And a lot of folks are on Medicaid. And there has been a recent Medicaid expansion covering inpatient residential treatment like I just described. That's a bit of a process to go through. Jefferson Center is, I think, the only agency in our county currently working on trying to get that stood up, but they're not there yet. So there just aren't as many options as there should be for folks seeking care. And then housing, I think everybody's constantly talking about housing. Not only is housing inaccessible for for a wide portion of our population, for people with substance use disorders and mental health conditions, it's really, really high barrier to access. There are a lot of rules, like, like you can't use drugs if 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 you want to get housing here. And it's really, really hard to stop using drugs unless you've got a roof over your head, especially when there's not very many accessible treatment options. And then one of the other most significant is that substance use is still extremely stigmatized. Basically, meaning that 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 people who use drugs are seen differently within our communities. They're treated a little bit differently. And that often gets compounded by some intersectional material conditions that people exist in. So their engagement in other types of criminal activity or things that we deem criminal activity like sex work, their their experience with homelessness or their current criminal justice system involvement, or even past criminal justice system involvement. So that was bad stuff. I think we've got a lot of great facilitators for success in our community, a lot of really kind of awesome innovative stuff happening. And I think that Sarah and Miranda can talk a lot more about some of that, too. But collaboration is really key for us. So we have that at the state level with the Colorado Consortium for Prescription Drug Abuse Prevention, which we partner with and participate in to collaborate at the state level. And then the Jefferson County Substance Use Partnership at our local county level, and then also our prevention coalition in Jefferson County called Communities That Care, focused on primary prevention for our young people. And then an increase in access to medication-assisted treatment. So medications like buprenorphine, also known as Suboxone, and methadone for opioid use disorders is becoming much, much more accessible now. One of the, if you could call it a silver lining to the coronavirus, has been an increased availability and accessibility of getting these medications prescribed when they're appropriate. Even even things like loosening methadone dispensing rules has helped get people into recovery. Another great kind of silver lining, I guess, if we're calling it that, is the coronavirus has forced us to increase our reliance and the accessibility of telemedicine. And that works really, really well for a lot of people for mental health and substance use treatment, especially folks that are in kind of the 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 middle range of the substance use spectrum. That kind of treatment access has been really, really important. And then also the expansion of harm reduction interventions and the adoption of harm reduction philosophy in our community. So I think that the Lakewood Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Pilot is a really great example of this. Our Harm Reduction vending machine also. And the the interest of the community and folks like you have in helping us prevent overdoses, helping us kind of support people in in living healthier lifestyles. Significant community engagement has been great, so we've Significant community engagement has been great, so we've got folks participating from across the community, from across, not just kind of professional spaces in our community, but people that live and enjoy their lives and their families. We have those people participating and are getting their feedback. And then also increased funding available. A thing that I forgot to mention earlier, I think I might have just skipped over it, was that we are also supporting the establishment of the Regional Governance Council for Opioid Settlement Funds. So Jefferson County is a part of a three-county region with Gilpin and Clear Creek to help determine how to administer fundings from opioid settlements with opioid manufacturers led by the Attorney General's Office, and making sure that those funds make it to the right places in the community so that they can have the greatest impact. And then lastly, an investment in data-driven decision-making. I think that looking at opportunities to, again, kind of peel back the curtain and get a better sense of what's happening around us is really, really important, and then it allows us to make decisions based on what we're actually seeing. And a really big part of that is getting feedback from the people that we serve, the people around them, from the people that are implementing these programs within our community, so that we can help kind of sharpen our toolset, if you will. And then community leadership from folks like you. And then, I don't know if we're taking questions for this portion or not, if not, please feel free to email me, it's really simple, it's just mmillar@jeffco.us.
Thank you, thank you, Michael. We'll just stop for just a minute, see if any counselors have any questions? And if no one else does, I had one about the harm reduction vending machines, can you tell me what that looks like?
Absolutely. So the harm reduction vending machine is a pilot initiative that we are right next to Wheat Ridge over there in Arvada at the Arts West Side Center for Change, which is one of our county's opioid treatment programs. We are implementing a vending machine where basically any member of our Points West program, which Miranda's going to talk about here in a second, can either sign up for that program, or are already members of that program, can go to get naloxone, the opioid overdose reversal drug, and fentanyl test strips, so that they can be a little bit more confident in what drugs they're using, instead of what drugs they were told they were given.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Ms. Nosler back.
You mentioned how it's very hard to, you know, deal with your addiction when you don't have a roof over your head. And I'm just wondering, is JCPH working with any of the homeless navigators on making sure that we're connecting people to those types of resources so that they can have a roof over their head as they try to get clean?
I can actually take this question, if you want.
And I'm sorry, I'm very tired, so I'm sorry, I'm saying things like "get clean", and I'm sure that's probably not politically correct or anything, I'm just sorry.
Oh, good, as long as you're interested, that's the first step, so that always helps for me. Yeah, so we have, and I'll talk a little bit more about this during my presentation, an outreach program that goes to deliver services to people specifically experiencing homelessness. So we are in contact often with the homeless navigators, Rebecca and I talk all the time to link people to that care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more questions. Michael, thank you very much for that presentation, and I will let you all continue.
All righty. It is my turn, so I'm going to share my screen. So hi, everyone, my name is Sarah Sweeterman, I use she/her pronouns, I'm a mental health specialist, and I am also the lead program coordinator at Jefferson County Public Health, and I'll be sure to tell you all about lead here in a minute, but mostly for the next few slides, I'm going to focus on how JCPH is kind of helping to identify and fill the gaps as far as mental health and substance use treatment in the county. So in 2018, through the Community Health Needs Assessment, we identified that mental health substance use treatment-related, 8.3% of Jefferson County residents needed but did not receive mental health care in 2017, and about 1.6 of Coloradans overall needed but did not receive treatment for substance misuse in the same year. So, kind of in part with that, in 2020, the Stedman Group evaluated the current state of treatment in Jeffco. So they did a three-part environmental scan, collecting themes regarding the gaps of treatment in that continuum of treatment and barriers to treatment. So that feedback that Michael was talking about, getting, you know, feedback and perspectives from providers, from folks who are seeking treatment, from people who are in the community seeing kind of these gaps and what's really needed. They did a really great environmental treatment scan, I think we sent it to y'all ahead of time, if not, I'll be sure to send it to you. But essentially, they broke it down into these two areas of identifying gaps in the treatment continuum, specifically a lack of peer support programs, the need for high-intensity residential treatment options, and the need for low costs and immediate treatment options. I know Michael touched on some of these things briefly before, and then as well as barriers to substance use treatment, including social determinants of health like transportation or socioeconomic status and stigma. So what I'm really excited to tell you about is kind of what we're doing as an agency to help fill those gaps. Specifically to target stigma, our Points West Syringe Exchange Team has a really great training for agencies, law enforcement, community partners, advocates, really just about anybody on the cycle of drug-related stigma. And I know that we have a lot of interest in this training, and it's really a great way to bring all folks up to speed, and really just understanding what the drug-related stigma is and how this affects the people in our community. One other really important treatment option that we recently started is the Bridge Clinic, which is a low-barrier harm reduction medication-assisted treatment program for people with opioid use disorder. Low barrier meaning that we try to make it as easy as possible for somebody to come in and get treatment or resources, they don't have to be abstaining from drugs, we have access to an onsite mental health provider, which is myself, though we also make sure not to require counseling. You know, a lot of treatment programs that we see in the community have a lot of requirements, and it can just make it really hard for folks to get the medication and the care that they need. And what we find is that when we make some of these aspects of our program optional, we find that folks are more likely to kind of engage with the onsite mental health provider or the case management services when we're not making it a requirement to participate. So our program accepts Medicaid as well, so I believe every client that we've seen has actually had Medicaid, so we're trying to fill that gap as well. We have a walk-in clinic, so, you know, not your typical by appointment-only clinic, we try to have an open-door policy every Tuesday from 9:30 to 11:30, but we can also schedule appointments. So, yeah, we're really excited about the Bridge Clinic program and partnering with a lot of other initiatives in the county like LEAD, hopeful that y'all have heard about it, Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program with the Lakewood Police Department. This is a collaboration between LPD, JCPH, and a new Community Connections Resource Center, C3, located right over in the Remington Building, and they're kind of like a central hub for resources and support for people who are re-entering after they're released from jail. So instead of making folks go to point A and B, and B-point 2, and C, and then back to A for, you know, all the different requirements or maybe support that they need, they really tried to bring all of the professionals and requirements and meetings into one place. The staff is also trained in harm reduction, and, you know, they're great partners to work with. So, all that to say, LEAD is really trying to find the folks in our community who are cycling in and out of our criminal justice system due to unmet behavioral health needs, and that's usually seen through low-level misdemeanor crimes. So officers are able to, instead of writing somebody a ticket or sending them back into the criminal justice system, they can instead call one of our social workers or case managers and say, hey, I think I have somebody here who would really fit the LEAD program, you know, they're really interested in getting some support, let's give them this option. You know, I think a lot of people have come to realize that the cycle and the path that we have been on and how we treat folks who are in and out of the criminal justice system, who are using drugs, who really need a lot of support and help, sending them back into the system just isn't working. So why not try something new, why not try something that's person-centered, trauma-informed, harm-reduction-focused? So our case managers are quite literally walking alongside our lead participants through every step of their journey, whether they're ready to stop using, or if they're continuing to use, whether they're looking for treatment, or if they're just quite not ready, if they want to reconnect with their family, or if they want to reconnect with their primary care physician. It's a really person-centered program in that there is no treatment contingency piece to the program, somebody does not have to go to speak to a therapist, they do not have to refrain from using drugs, because we really just find again and again that those requirements don't align with long-term success. So, that's the LEAD program, I could talk about it for a really long time, but I also want to let everyone else talk about their programs and work as well. The last piece of this that I will speak to as a way that we're kind of filling some of those gaps is a recent hire of our peer support specialist, which we're really excited about. So as Michael mentioned earlier, peers are kind of a very integral, important piece of that treatment spectrum, that treatment continuum, someone who's been where our folks have been, who can really offer a different kind of understanding and compassion that maybe a treatment provider or therapist or case manager just hasn't had that same experience. And to have that kind of compassion and support through every step of the journey has shown to be really successful and long-term success, and really just helping to re-empower individuals throughout the process as well. So we're really hopeful that this peer support specialist will be able to help support the patients at our Bridge Clinic, as well as our lead participants, and just kind of offering their expertise and their services in a few different areas. So, really excited about that. Those are all the things I have to talk about. Are there any questions? Is now a good time to answer questions?
Sarah, thank you very much, and I will ask council if there are questions for Sarah. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sarah, you mentioned that the LEAD program is with the Lakewood Police Department, is that something the Wheat Ridge Police Department is involved in as well, or is that...?
No, so right now, we're just with the Lakewood Police Department, so, and it is a pilot program, we're starting with a very small catchment area, and that is from Wadsworth to Sheridan, I want to say 10th to 20th, I think that's right. And the goal is definitely to expand to neighboring communities, and what that catchment area essentially does is whenever someone is, you know, potentially could be arrested for a misdemeanor low-level crime within that catchment area, that makes them eligible for the program. We have one case manager right now, hoping to have two, so just kind of keeping in mind capacity concerns, really just trying to keep our initial area small, but we definitely would love to kind of expand that north, south, east, and west, and include Wheat Ridge and just the whole city of Lakewood as well eventually, so, not yet, but hopefully.
That sounds like a great program, I hope we can keep our eye on that, and as that expansion comes, it would be great to bring it here, because I really like the sounds of that program, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll add to that too, something I probably should have added, is that LEAD is a national program, it was started in 2011 in Seattle, just out of recognition of racial disparities of folks getting arrested in Seattle for, you know, similar drug-related offenses. So LEAD exists in, I think, almost every state, and it's unique in that it can kind of be tailored to the unique needs of each community. So I'd be happy to send some additional follow-up information on what LEAD looks like across the world, actually, I think we just expanded to like South Africa, so it's definitely, it's everywhere, there's a lot of programs, and each one looks a little different, we have one in Denver, Longmont, Coeblow, and Alamosa as well, if you're interested, so.
Sarah, thank you so much, and if you have any more information, please send it to Ally, and she'll get it to everybody. Thank you very much, great, great presentation. Okay, I'll let you all continue.
And I think I am up next. I'm not sure if I can share my screen. Yes, okay. So I am Miranda Thompson, I am the Homeless Outreach Coordinator, working closely with our Points West Syringe Services Program, the only syringe services program in Jefferson County. We are a safe, inclusive, legal, confidential, and anonymous program, so that means that we essentially are legal both to provide syringes to people who come to our services, and those that come to our services are legally allowed to carry those syringes. So we are based in harm reduction, many of you might already know about harm reduction, just to give a quick recap, harm reduction, we define as a set of practical strategies and ideas aimed at reducing the risks associated with drug use. So our goal in our services is to provide non-judgmental, non-coercive services to people who use drugs. We also expand that to include people who are in a place to assist people who use drugs, and we'll get more into that in the nitty-gritty of the services that we provide. Our goals, number one, reduce overdose, as Michael talked about, our overdoses have been drastically increasing, especially along with the pandemic, and the differences in the drug market currently, I know there's been a lot of news reports about fentanyl found in various drug supplies, so we've been seeing that greater amount of overdoses in our work. And I know that the CDC recently recorded the passing of over 100,000 recorded overdose deaths in a 12-month period, so this is a very prevalent and pressing issue. However, we also don't want to get lost in that issue of also recognizing that it reduces the transmission of infectious diseases. Syringe services programs allow people who inject drugs to not have to share their syringes or reuse their syringes, which reduces greatly the incidence of diseases such as HIV and hepatitis C. There were 311 new HIV cases in 2020 in Colorado, and over 2,600 newly diagnosed HCV cases in 2019, so we're still seeing this as a pressing issue. And luckily, we've seen that syringe service programs are associated with a 50% reduction in the incidence of HIV and HCV overall. And then finally, we do syringe disposal too, so when people come into our services, what we have them do is we have them bring in any used syringes that they may have, and then we match whatever they bring in plus 40. So if somebody brings no syringes in, we'll start them off with 40. This tends to be a little bit higher than other syringe service programs, because we recognize that in Jefferson County, a lot of people are coming from rural areas, and it might be more difficult for them to get to the syringe service, you know, weekly or even monthly, so making sure that they have enough to be able to not have to reuse and not have to share. And then we match whatever they bring in, so that they're encouraged to return those syringes upon return. We have an 82% return rate as of 2021, I imagine it would have been a little bit higher if we didn't have a pandemic and people didn't have difficulty getting back to us, but we also provide pretty much everybody with disposal boxes, so people can dispose safely even if they can't get back to us. So some of our data in terms of what we were able to do in 2021... So some of our data in terms of what we were able to do in 2021, I think I doubled this by accident. But we conducted a lot of exchanges. So an exchange basically is anybody that we gave syringes to. And enrolled 327 new people, which is huge despite the pandemic. We were able to get out and help that many people. We actually never stopped our services throughout the entirety of the pandemic. So that was awesome. We distributed over a thousand Narcan, which was huge. Distributed almost 4,000 fentanyl test strips, which are testing strips to test your drugs for the presence of fentanyl. We found that's hugely popular with this new presence of fentanyl and has been helpful in people making smarter decisions and more informed choices about the drugs that they use. We've also noticed a shift in the usage of drugs. It's not, you know, we don't just serve people who inject drugs. We also serve people who smoke drugs and they can obviously do both. We actually recommend switching, you know, modes of injection to help. You know, decrease the harms associated with injection drug use. So we started providing safer smoking kits. And we also, in our efforts to prevent HIV and HCV, delivered several thousand of condoms. And we, as an anonymous and confidential program, I think. Are in a great place to sort of report overdose reversals. I think people feel comfortable sharing with us some of that information and we were able to purport. A significant amount of reversals, which is huge. That's, you know, 158 people saved from our Narcan alone. So. In addition to our in-house services, we also started completing street outreach. When the COVID pandemic hit, we wanted to make sure that we were providing to our more vulnerable. You know, community members, people experiencing homelessness. And when we got out there, we quickly realized that there was. A big need to get our syringe services out there as well. You know, certainly not everybody who experiences homelessness also uses drugs. But it makes it much more difficult to get reliable transportation to our in-house services. And also many people are also at a place to respond to overdose. In the field, even if they don't use themselves or to provide, you know, sterile equipment to friends and family members. So we started providing syringe services when we do our street outreach. We also started beginning as a, you know, hub for COVID-19 information and supplies. We originally were providing testing and now we're providing vaccinations. Our staffing has been a little shorted, but we've been able to provide a pretty significant amount of vaccines during our outreach programming. We also make it a huge goal to provide basic life necessities, you know, those. Basic tools that we think act as harm reduction too. You know, it's much easier to be healthy if you've got water and food in your belly, you know, and you're taking care of your cold weather gear and stuff like that. And then of course, our referral sources. So, you know, our goal is obviously to help people get into housing as well. While we can't always do that or have the capacity to do that, we're in contact with all the local municipal navigators as well as with the larger heading home community. And then what the fun part about our street outreach is that we were able to get local data. So we visited Wheat Ridge 46 times in 2021. I know I-70 and Kipling tends to be a pretty talked about area in terms of homelessness. So we were able to visit them 23 times. That was actually our most visited area in 2021. We served 336 individuals and 180, completed 180 exchanges. So like I said. Not everyone experiencing homelessness obviously uses drugs. We serve anyone regardless of whether they use drugs or not, because we see it as a betterment to the community. And just helps us get involved too with also more people who could potentially respond to an overdose in real time. And I just wanted to list a few community needs that we've been able to see through our work with people experiencing homelessness and people who use drugs. Obviously, I think Rebecca and I have talked about this a few times. You know, the need for hygiene. So in addition to that sterile supply work that we're doing, also the importance of having, you know, people able to wash their hands and take care of themselves more hygienically. Reduces the risk of other infectious diseases like Hep A. And also, you know, making sure obviously with COVID going on, that people are able to respond to that as well. Overdose prevention and response. So obviously getting more Narcan out into the community. Making sure that people have the tools to both prevent overdose, so stop it before it happens and then also respond if it does happen. And then as Michael already mentioned, affordable housing is a key part of, you know, reducing harm and helping people to get. You know, their sort of higher level needs met when their basic needs are met. And feel free to reach out to us at any time. There's various. Contacts right here. Our syringe service program operates Mondays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. And we close Tuesday and Friday so that we can do our street outreach. And we go to I-70 and Kipling every other Friday. So you'll see us out and. As you saw a picture, we're out with those green backpacks. So if you ever see us out there, you can give us a wave.
Miranda, thank you very much for some really great information there. Let's see if we have any questions from counsel. Ms. Nosler back.
You said that the I-70 and Kipling was the most visited site. Was that the most visited site in Wheat Ridge or the most visited site in the county?
It was the most visited site in the entire county. It was a close, it was close between Colfax and I-70 and Kipling.
Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. Have you recorded a reduction in use due to these efforts?
So it's very difficult to get that data at a local level because our work is anonymous. So we can't really follow up with people. We don't take down their names. We've seen that nationally, people are three times more likely to stop using. When they're engaged in syringe service programs as opposed to when they're not, and five times more likely to engage in those services to begin with.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Nosler back.
This might be a question for you, Jerry. So, hey Jerry. But with the opioid. The, the, I forget what we signed on to.
The settlement.
Thank you. Yeah, the settlement. I know that that's all done by like counties and regions and stuff. So when we. Because we've signed on to that, is this something where at a county level, we'll be going into like paying, like making that money go to JCPH? To help with some of these efforts here? Or is that how that settlement works?
Well, the, you're correct. The city participates in that settlement. And has agreed to the stipulation that the Attorney General's Office had put together. Where those settlement funds are largely administered by the counties for smaller jurisdictions like the city. And so it's a matter of working with the county, once those funds are available to determine what the, the actual. Use of those funds will be. And I'm sure there'll be a whole raft of programs that. Some of which may include the ones you're hearing about tonight, but some of which may not. And it will be a matter of the city interacting with the county to be comfortable with. The county's plan for the use of the funds that are the city's share.
That's great. But I just wanted to make that connection that if this is the type of programming that could, you know, benefit from the settlement. Because with Wheat Ridge being one of the, it looks like the hotspots where these services are needed, that makes a lot of sense. So.
I absolutely expect that this program will receive funding through that funding source because as you point out, it's. It's directly related to the, the reason we are getting those funds.
Miranda, I had a question. I know that you, you mentioned that you provide life, life. Supplies for, for clients out in the field. I know that there are people in our community who would like to donate to those types of things. How would, how would they best do that?
There's a bunch of different donation sites. I know that the Action Center in Lakewood provides a lot of those like clothing resources specifically. If they wanted to get in contact with our team, we could also provide them to various other places or Human Services probably has a lot of good resources too.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Terrific. Let's, let's keep moving down the, down the line. So we'll let you go to your next presenter.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Allison Goto. And I'm a special projects coordinator at Jefferson County Public Health, working on the Food Systems Team there. And tonight, I'm here to talk a little bit about. Food insecurity in Jefferson County and what we've seen during the pandemic, as well as some of the most recent reports that our team has put out. So in 2020, when the pandemic hit, we saw the percentage of Jefferson County residents who did not have enough food. Go from 10% to 40%, which was a pretty drastic increase. In response, the Jefferson County Food Policy Council in partnership with Jefferson County Public Health helped to provide some. Emergency assistance funding and distributed over 1.3 million dollars to food assistance providers. So while we acted quickly and effectively and collaboratively, we still saw breakdowns within the food system. And so I think the pandemic really solidified the need to build a more resilient food system and food environment overall. Which will take collaboration and ingenuity from all players in the food system. So this was really the impetus for our team to create these two reports. The one you see on the bottom right. The report called Recovery Building Resilience Center in Community to Create a Food Secure Jefferson County came out in February of 2021. And the report in the top left, the network report came out this past fall. And so I'm just going to talk a little bit about each of those reports and walk through kind of the highlights of them. So the first report we put out, we really focused on five different factors that we identified as being kind of the largest. Factors for, for food insecurity in the county. And those included affordability, supply and distribution. Funding, education and cultural awareness and proximity. So taking those five factors, we really started to look deeply at the emergency COVID-19 response. And really where there was positive impacts as a result of the pandemic response and where there are still some limitations and negative circumstances. So for instance, with regards to affordability, you know, we saw the, the creation of pandemic EBT, which really provided additional support to families. During the peak of the pandemic, but we also saw a rise in unemployment. And so we really tried to track closely kind of these different limitations to identify the gaps and areas in which our food system could be more resilient. So from that and through. A project called Food in Communities, which has allowed us to talk to community members over the past three years, as well as work closely with community organizations in Jefferson County. We really were able to identify different areas in which we saw opportunities to create a more resilient food system for, for long term recovery. And through that, we, we identified different areas of policy, program values, funding and capacity building with kind of, within each of the five factors. So. For instance, I know that Wheat Ridge has been doing some really great projects on, on looking at land use. So. One of our, our suggestions for supply and distribution was looking at developing model land use and zoning policies to support local agricultural production. To really increase, increase supply in, in our local system. Hopefully you all received the reports and if not, I'm happy to send them along with the slides, but I'm not going to go through every, every factor, factor right now, but just wanted to kind of orient you all to. What you can expect to look, to see when you look at the report. But each of the factors. Were broken down into some additional recommendations based on, again, conversations with community members. So really ensuring that our suggestions are community informed as well as, as well as with community organizations. We also broke down especially the policy piece into opportunities for local government to be involved as well as state and federal opportunities. So just for instance, here with affordability, you can see that something like requiring double up food buckets at food sites on municipal and county property is something that. Local municipalities can do. In addition, in the report, we broke down the kind of different policy recommendations into a timeline. So that way, you know, folks can see kind of how long it would take to get some of these. Solutions put into place and what it might be quick wins versus longer term efforts. And again, breaking it down by the federal and state local opportunities there. The second report that came out on this past fall was really building upon our, our previous report. And was a network, network, Food Systems Network Report, creating a vision for Jefferson County's future. Really the main goal of this, this project was to create an action plan for Jefferson County Food System stakeholders and subsystems. So the three objectives were to develop a detailed food system map to help identify gaps within the food system. Create a vision of resilience across the Jefferson County food system and develop an action plan of community based solutions. For coordinated and collective action as well as funding opportunities. Just to ground this report a little bit and, and what we are considering a resilient food system in terms of what our aim is to create. We're really looking at a resilient food system that is composed of three interacting subsystems of policy, markets. And institutions and production. When each of these have the capacity to really prepare for and recover from shocks, that's how we know we, we, we've developed a resilient system. So when we're talking about production, we're talking about a subsystem that includes everything involved in growing and producing food products for consumption. When we're talking about markets and institutions, we're talking about the capacity to move food from producer to consumer. And then when we're talking about policy, we're talking about policies and programs that make markets and institution subsystems as well as production and distribution subsystems more robust. So you can really see how we really need a robust system in all three of these subsystems in order to have a resilient food system overall. So really to begin with and developing a food system map, our team worked with stakeholders and took a stakeholder inventory. Of those that work within food access across the county. So we conducted a survey, which we received 56 responses from. And we conducted three one hour focus groups with ranchers, individuals who work in the emergency food system. And individuals who identified as urban farmers or local food businesses. If you access this report online, there's a link to the site where you'll find the, the map, which is pictured on the left here. And it also gets broken down a little bit further into a few different, few different categories if, if you're interested. And from there, we were really able to identify some gaps that came up within, within the mapping that we did. And so really some of the challenges and gaps that came up most prolifically were system, systemic capacity. So. We saw individual and subsystem capacity limitations. We saw some limitations with stakeholder connectivity and collaboration. And really the siloing of channels, not only within organizations, but also in how that related to public access. With regards to policy, we did see unfortunately that there are some limitations in policies that increase equity in terms of how services were provided to the public. A lack of leveraging resources through policy and still the continued need to continue educating the public with regards to nutrition, education. And then with funding, oftentimes we see that funding is not flexible, which can be a challenge for folks. And there are siloed, siloed funding opportunities, which kind of. Decreased cooperation amongst, amongst players within the food system. And then the last thing we really saw was perception versus reality. So really recognizing the disconnect, how people viewed themselves within the food system versus. How others might view them and kind of the disconnect between those two things. So really the second goal was to create a vision of resilience across Jefferson County food system in partnership with, with the folks that we chatted with. And so I'm not going to go through all, all of these things, but the visual provides a really great, I think. Understanding of kind of what a resilient food system would look like from everything from production to getting it to the consumer. But really looking at wanting to ensure there's widespread access to fresh, nutritious and culturally appropriate food. That there's entrepreneurial food ecosystem and opportunities for folks that we're supporting local farmers and food workers. There's collaboration across all sectors of the food system and that it's community centered in the solutions that we're, we're seeking. And again, just the environmental factors, because we know how much that plays into our ability to produce food in our county. So the, the last piece that this, this project really focused on was developing an action plan from community based solutions. To create. Coordinated efforts and actions as well as funding opportunities. So really things that we're looking at is monitoring food system indicators. And so one of the largest kind of barriers is that oftentimes folks that are working within the food system are looking at different metrics. And so what are ways that we can create a common data collection system that will improve coordination across the system? As well as monitor availability and status of like physical infrastructure or acreage. the effectiveness of policies and collaborations across cities and institutions? And then really a shift in collecting process-based indicators as opposed to outcome-based indicators, which will really tell us how well we're serving folks, not just how many folks we're serving. The second piece was recognizing food system emergencies and risks across the food system. So opportunities to do regular risk analysis and contingency planning, ensuring there's relief and stimulus policies that kick in when emergency strikes, adaptive food production strategies that are created based on previous system shocks and flexible funding opportunities. Number three, evidence-based policymaking and planning across the public and private sector. So really ensuring there's collaboration with policymakers to provide them with the best available research and information to guide decisions on every stage and across all levels of government. And then number four, mobilization of communities for action and community-centered leadership across the food system. This is something that JCPH, as well as the Food Policy Council, is extremely passionate about and understanding how important it is to have community in the conversation. So what are ways that, you know, organizations can help with various forms of community engagement, including facilitating community conversations, building networks and relationships, and providing information? And really like ensuring that these things are codified into plans and legislations as solutions are developed? And then, the final piece of evaluation, analysis, and accountability of utilizing these capacities really relates to number one in terms of if we're able to establish a more common data collection system across the food system and with partners, how are we then ensuring that we're evaluating and analyzing that work in similar ways? So that way, we're able to measure the effectiveness of some of the solutions and some of the some of the progress we make within the food system in relation to some of the strategies that have been suggested? So in the report, at the end, there's an appendix piece that really captures some of these action plans in more detail in terms of suggestions within these different subsystems that I mentioned at the beginning, and different ways that folks can engage in developing solutions around them at different levels of government or for even organizations themselves. And then finally, I just want to talk about like next steps and what is currently happening in the county. So this report was, these reports are really great first steps for identifying certain things. And we also recognize that they're a bit limited in their scope. And so opportunities to continue developing more comprehensive maps of the Jefferson County food system and really ensuring that we're capturing all sectors of that is really important. In addition, the Jefferson County Food Policy Council continues to meet. And they're prioritizing and advocating for food policies at various levels of government. And they're also acting as kind of a central convener. The hope is that they can act as a central convener for all the different actors within the food system, really in order to carry out the action plan laid out in the report in partnership with different folks across the county. In addition, the Food Policy Council helps provide data collection and GIS mapping and technical assistance and capacity building to various organizations, coalition municipalities, and with collaboration with the county, helped to leverage an additional $1.1 million for organizations within the county that are participating in work that's related to these action plans and the strategies laid out in the first report as well. And that is in relation to the work that we've done with Community First Foundation, in which they really use these reports to guide their funding opportunities, which is one of the suggestions that we had had put in our first report in terms of how to make a more robust system in relationship with local funders. So that's something we're really excited about. And we're excited to see the projects that have been funded over the next two years and kind of the progress that they're able to make in terms of creating a more resilient food system here in Jefferson County. And yeah, with that, I just want to say thank you again so much for inviting us to share about some of our work that we've done. I'm happy again to share these reports if you haven't received them. There's really a lot of great information and always happy to answer any questions now or beyond this meeting.
Allison, thank you very much for an interesting report on the Food Policy Council and all the things you're doing to sort of secure our food in the county. Do we have any questions for Allison? Okay, Counselor Holtine.
Thank you. This isn't a question, but rather, I just want to comment that a lot of this work is the work that Councilmember Weaver and I have been doing through the Regenerate Wheat Ridge Program. And Jefferson County Public Health has been a tremendous partner in that and has provided a lot of guidance and resources. And we're really excited that we're doing some innovative work to fulfill some of these policy priorities right here in Wheat Ridge. So great work, everybody, and we're excited to be part of this.
Yeah, a huge thank you for the partnership of Wheat Ridge in terms of putting some of, taking these reports and putting them into practice. And we're really excited to see kind of the progress across the cities that we're able to make and just so appreciative of your support. And yeah, the efforts that you're putting in locally to make Jefferson County a more resilient place in terms of food, food access for folks.
Thank you. I remember sitting in on the Food Policy Council meetings oh, five or six or seven years ago. And we had the Healthy Eating Active Living Program here and really, I believe, has made a real impact in our community. So Allison, thank you very much for the work you do and for the report that you provided us.
Thank you.
With that, let us move on, continue down the report path. Not sure who is going next.
I see Michael is next, but I'm happy to go ahead for the Tobacco and Vaping Presentation.
Okay, please, continue.
All right, just pull up my screen here. All right. Well, thank you so much for giving us the time to come and share about the status of vaping and tobacco in Jefferson County tonight. My name is Katie Lazar, use she/her pronouns, and I am a Tobacco Policy Specialist with JCPH. Joined by Donna Vivarrette tonight, who is our supervisor and program manager for the Tobacco Prevention Program at JCPH as well. So for tonight, we'd like to just give a quick overview of what we know about the status of specifically youth vaping in the county right now and sort of what trends we are seeing from what we can tell. And then from there, we'd like to talk about, you know, next steps that can be taken, especially from a policymaker perspective. So for starters, some great news. We are seeing some slow and steady progress from the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. Comparing 2017 to 2019, you can see here that we do see a decrease in the percentage of young people who have vaped in the past 30 days, as well as those who have smoked a cigarette in the past 30 days. What I'd really like to draw the attention to, though, is this middle graph where we see that the perception of vaping as risky has really increased from 2017 to 2019. And I think that that could really be attributed to a big push for educational resources and messaging in the community, as well as the vaping-related lung illness that was really prominent in the headlines in 2019. So a big caveat, the world is a much different place than in 2019. And we just wrapped up the Healthy Kids 2021 Survey. And we're not going to have those results for a couple more months here. So we're not quite sure what exactly to expect with the data if we're going to keep seeing this decrease. We have been talking to our school partners across Jefferson County and specifically here in Wheat Ridge High School. And there seems to be a consensus, at least from those who we've talked to, that while there was this, you know, large drop in them seeing vaping and just generally tobacco use in the schools during COVID, it seemed they definitely saw a resurgence when they returned to in-person learning in August. They've also noted that the types of devices that we're seeing are a bit different than they were a few years ago. Juul and the POD devices used to be really popular. And now we're seeing a lot more of these batteryless and disposable devices. They also note that the devices are, you know, a lot smaller. They're becoming more smaller and smaller and a lot harder to catch. And we've also heard consensus around our school partners and especially the school nurses that it really does feel like the like mental health and well-being among young people is really struggling at the moment. And just anecdotal evidence that these devices are being used as coping mechanisms. So definitely a lot of work to do, definitely something we want to keep our eye on. But we also want to celebrate that Wheat Ridge in 2021 took great strides in reducing youth access to vaping devices. In April 2021, Wheat Ridge City Council unanimously passed a comprehensive and a really strong tobacco retail licensing ordinance. It requires that all tobacco retailers be licensed. It also codifies 21 as the minimum legal sale age for tobacco. And it also outlines that no new retail sales license are, so no new retail sales licenses are to be issued within 1,000 feet of a public or private school or youth-serving facility. We are really proud of our continued partnership with the city of Wheat Ridge, especially with the Wheat Ridge Police Department. And we plan to continue partnering with them as they start to conduct their twice-annual retail inspections beginning this year. We're hoping to partner with them to identify youth as undercover purchasers for compliance checks as needed, where there is a support for that. And we'd also love to work on a process to collect data and continue to evaluate the impact of this tobacco retail license and how to really make sure that enforcement is done equitably and efficiently and just continue evaluating that. So that's a little bit about where we are now. So now I'd like to talk about why it is more important than ever that we're addressing youth vaping and tobacco use, as well as what options exist for city council. So as we've heard tonight, especially with the COVID-19 pandemic, mental health across the county is a major issue of concern for JCPH. We, our team in particular, wants to point out that there is this intersectionality with youth mental health and youth vaping and nicotine use. We know that many youths start vaping to lessen these feelings of stress, anxiety, and depression. And many continue vaping to cope with these feelings. But there is evidence out there that vaping and nicotine dependence can actually make these feelings more severe and worsen the effects of anxiety and depression. We also see that those who currently use e-cigarettes are twice as likely to have a diagnosis of depression compared to those who do not vape. In addition to the mental health component, our team really focuses on tobacco as a health equity issue. We know that the tobacco industry has for decades disproportionately targeted numerous communities that have historically been marginalized. And tobacco use continues to disproportionately affect these communities, including people who are low-income, people of color, LGBT individuals, and those with mental illness. This long history that's been documented of targeting by the tobacco industry can be seen in the targeting of predominantly black communities with menthol cigarettes. Today, we can see that nearly nine in 10 black Americans aged 12 or older who smoke do use menthol cigarettes. We see it in where tobacco advertisements are placed. The tobacco industry has strategically placed more tobacco advertisements in predominantly black neighborhoods. And we have also seen internal tobacco industry documents that have revealed the tobacco industry's interest in the Hispanic and Latino community through branding, financial contributions, and again, targeted advertising. So additional tobacco policy options that exist for city council, if you are at all interested. And again, we can come back or provide more information on this and go in more in-depth at another time. But one would be a comprehensive flavored tobacco policy. And really what this would do would, it would address the higher prevalence of flavored tobacco product use among youth. Because we do know that eight out of 10 youths who currently use e-cigarettes use flavored e-cigarettes. We know that flavored tobacco has long been an industry target to hook young and new consumers. So addressing the supply of flavored tobacco in the community is one way to address that. Another option that exists is looking at tobacco advertising, particularly in the retail environment. And what this does is it reduces the exposure of young people to tobacco messaging, and it does help to denormalize tobacco and vape use. Both the comprehensive flavored tobacco policy and tobacco advertising can be added to the existing licensing ordinance that exists in Wheat Ridge currently. And then finally, the last option I'd like to discuss tonight is tobacco pricing strategies. The Surgeon General has called raising the price on tobacco one of the most effective tobacco control interventions, especially when it comes to reducing youth use. So that's just another option that exists. And again, we'd be happy to talk about these more in-depth at any time. But for that, I'd leave it open for questions if there are any.
Thank you very much, Katie. Do we have any questions or comments on this, on smoking and vaping? You know, we addressed this pretty vigorously at our city council earlier last year. And I think we did a great job, so. Okay, Katie, thank you very much for bringing us that report. We appreciate that and the work that you do to help keep our young people particularly safe from the effects of smoking and vaping.
Thank you.
So thank you. I'm not quite sure where we are in the program. Do we have some more presentations?
Katie or Donna, do you know, is there a presentation on housing specifically? No? Okay. Is that everybody from JCPH? Is that all the presentations?
Great. Well, listen, we didn't want to cut anybody off, but we wanted to thank you very much. It's a lot of great, great information and good discussion. A lot of really good health information coming out of our public health department. So it's been a challenging, you know, to say the least, a challenging year or a challenging couple of years in the public health field. You know, I'm sort of glad that I didn't get into that, but I certainly appreciate you all doing that. And I appreciate the work that you do to keep our counties and our communities safe. Counselor Nosler Beck.
JCPH, you all cover water as well. I have gotten a couple of questions recently about water quality. People are concerned about other people like defecating in the Coal Creek River. Coal Creek, I'm so sorry, my brain. In Clear Creek. And I guess I'm asking if that is a JCPH issue or if that's a city issue? Like for water quality? I don't know. I'm just wondering that question.
Yeah, this is Christine. I can attempt to answer that. It would probably be a combined issue between the city, JCPH, and the State Health Department, depending on the investigation and what was found. If any of your constituents have concerns, they can always, there's a reporting line at the State Health Department. I'd have to find the link, but if they Google like CDPH spill report, they can report the concern to the State Health Department. And then it'll be created into a report and funneled to the appropriate people for follow-up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this Agenda Item Number One? I'd like to thank Jefferson County Public Health and all of the individuals that joined us tonight for coming and giving us a great presentation. So thank you so much. We appreciate it. Before we go into Item Number Two, we're going to take about a short five or eight minute. Let's come back at 25 after the hour, a little break. Thank you.
...special event permit. Existing process not affected by this, by this new license form at all, although I will be recommending that we, we use the special event permit requirements that we're used to applying to apply to these new festival licenses for reasons that I'd like to articulate to you. But I wanted to kind of disabuse you of the notion that this is going to affect Carnation Festival right at the top because it is not. As I said, the legislature did this in their latest session and effective in September, there's this, there's this statute that's in your packet, and it creates this new, what I will call floating liquor license. If you are a liquor licensee anywhere in the state, let's say you've got a hotel and restaurant liquor license in Steamboat, or in Swink, or in Mankos, or in Federal Heights, you can apply for one of these floating liquor festival licenses, and you conduct that festival and you, and operate under that license anywhere in the state. You don't have to be doing it in the jurisdiction where you've gotten your liquor license. You happen to have your liquor license in your pocket, that makes you eligible to apply for one of these floating licenses. And so you, you float into the city of Wheat Ridge and rent the Safeway parking lot, and that's where you have your event. And in addition, you can invite other liquor licensees from other places around the state to join you in that event. There's only one perma-tee, and that's the first person that has asked for this license. Others simply join, and they're not perma-tees, but they are allowed to participate in the event. So it's a very odd kind of new animal, and it's a floating liquor license, so really it doesn't necessarily, unless you require, and I want to get to that in a minute, doesn't necessarily have any connection to the city of Wheat Ridge. And that's the way the statute's written. But luckily, the legislature said, look, local jurisdictions, local liquor licensing jurisdictions can require a local permit if they wish. And that's the subject of what's in front of you, and I think it makes all sorts of sense to be in the game rather than not in the game. I'll say also that I got a question earlier today, well, could the city just prohibit these things from floating into the city at all? Because what's really in it for the city? Why are we really doing this? And my assessment is probably not. The legislation is not the, the best written, but it says there's this local, there's this new permit, this new license, and you require a state license, and locals may also require a local license. And that doesn't quite get to, locals may also say no, as far as I'm concerned. But there, there was some action on the attorney's list serve today, because I asked that question, and at least a couple people said, well, that's fine, but why can't local jurisdictions under the police power simply prohibit that kind of activity, just like we prohibit dogfighting and other kinds of activities? Or why can't we just say that that's a zoning matter? And potentially, you could. We're a ways down the road here, and it may well be that there is a liquor festival that is of value to the city in terms of economic activity that's being brought to the city, and I'm not unaware of that. So for that reason, with that long prologue, but I wanted to give you kind of the outside dimensions of what the legislature's chosen to lay in your laps to respond to before we go any further. So what the Liquor Authority here has done is looked at the bill and come up with some procedures that you see in your, in your packet. And Joe Rivera in, in my office represents the Liquor Authority and goes to their meetings. He was not able to come tonight, and so he's done a memo, and it's the memo dated September 16, that really asks for some guidance from the council. I think the way to do that is take up the questions, just get a consensus around each one, and that way there will be good direction back to Liquor Authority, refine the process a bit, and maybe even bring it back to you. You may ask this, you may say, well, if the Liquor Authority takes care of liquor, why are we seeing this? And, you know, they, they, they take care of issuing liquor licenses, and, and why should we need to see it? And the answer is that when the event happens and there are calls and complaints, the calls and complaints will not go to the Liquor Authority, will they? They will go to you. And not unlike the amplified sound issue, and, and not unlike the tobacco licensing, these are the kinds of things that really raise issues generally for the city, and you're going to get the calls no matter what. And so it's important that I think you be involved in what the issues are. Having said that, the Liquor Authority has asked for some comments, and I want to make two particular points, and then we can go through the, the questions that Joe has asked, because that largely will then give the kind of guidance back to Liquor Authority they need to do to finalize this. The first question I think I would ask them, and, and I'm not sure, yeah, it's number one actually on Joe's list, should local festival permits, and festival is such a un, what's the right, unfortunate term, since we have Carnation Festival, but I've now told you why when I say festival here, it means this, new floating license should be limited persons having a valid City of Wheat Ridge liquor license. And, and I think that there's real value in requiring that, otherwise it's the people from Swink that want to show up. Now, they'd have to apply locally, but let me make this point, if there's violations, the statute allows you to assess fines, but if that licensee is from out of town, you're not going to be able to revoke their liquor license issued by Federal Heights, you don't have that authority, and you're going to have to pursue them to Federal Heights, or to Swink, or to Mankos, my favorite communities to mention on the west slope and the east slope, that are really far away. But as in, just, just to kind of make the, make the point. So that's, that's one important question. And the second point I think I would like to make is the structure that's been put together by the Liquor Authority requires a special event type permit process in terms of Health Department, Police Department review for festivals permits that would be using city property, and that's great. But in my opinion, I would recommend that that same process be applied to any applicant, because that process carries with it, and you see all the detail in the packet, going to the PD to say, well, how large is this, this event, and what should the security be? Going to the Health Department if there's going to be food, and bathrooms, et cetera. And that really ought to be universal. And, and the fact that it is on city property and we're acquiring it, but if it's in the Safeway parking lot, we shouldn't be checking with the Police, should not be checking with Police Department, doesn't make sense to me. In any event, that's kind of the, the thumbnail sketch. I'm happy to take you through the individual questions raised, and we can get council consensus, we can ask if Robin or Steve want to add, Steve, are you, Steve's there? Can't seem, because he's got all these computer monitors now.
Yeah.
I want to thank Joe Rivera and especially Robin Eaton, because they did a tremendous amount of work on this liquor festival project. We convened people from any department in the city that wanted to participate, I believe there were three, Parks and Rec, the Police Department, and Finance, to talk about how we would go about this. And they discussed the possibility, as Mr. Dahl indicated, of just saying, no, we're not doing this here. But quickly, Joe Rivera said, no, you're going to have a problem if you try to do There was a lengthy discussion in the Liquor Authority Board meeting where they talked about their recommendations and the process they're going to set up to do this. And they reached the same conclusion that Mr. Dahl's recommending, that the process here ought to be very similar to a special event. And for, think of the Carnation Festival, which is an actual festival, and all of the folks who have to be there and make sure that everything runs smoothly. For instance, if you apply for a special event permit, you have to have a certain number of chemical toilets per hundred people. You have to have, as we do at the Carnation Festival, security, whether it's Wheat Ridge PD or someone else. That's just two examples of a whole list of things that start with closing off an area for the festival and ending up with cleaning up the mess after. And so what we're trying to do here is control what these festivals will look like and cost, how much time will be involved in issuing permits, et cetera. When some, and, and I was dumbfounded when I read what Jerry just said. If you have a liquor license in Baca County, which is as far southeast as you can get in Colorado, you can come up here and start having a festival, you can apply, the key thing here is you can apply to the state for, I think it's $25, and get a permit to hold a three-day festival. And if the local, this is very important, if the local municipality or county does not regulate those festival permits, then anybody with a liquor license in Colorado can have a three-day, 10,000-person festival, unless we regulate it. My personal view is, I don't see an awful lot of payoff to the city for doing these, but I don't see we have a choice. So what we want to do is set up a, a very clear, specific set of regulations that will explain to people what they have to do, how the process works. So for instance, give you a specific example of a detail, the state allows you to hold the festival five days after they issue the permit. So if someone came along and started setting up, as Jerry said, in the, in the Safeway parking lot, what could we do? Well, if we don't have a regulation on these festivals, then we don't know what we could do at all. So as Jerry says, A, you'll get the complaints, but B, we're looking for policy recommendations from council in terms of how much regulation you want to put in place. Jerry, is that a, a fair summary of what we're doing here?
It is a fair summary, and it, it, it's a good way to kind of tee off going to the second page of Joe's memo. Question seven, let's, we might as well just do the easy ones. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm just trying to understand how many, like, how many potential festival permits, is there a cap at the state level where, like, are we talking about 25 permits total in the state, or is it like a free-for-all?
What the statute says is that, that an individual festival licensee, this, this, this perma-tee, this licensee that came in from, we'll pick on Federal Heights, came in from Federal Heights, can have up to nine during a 12-month period. So that's nine permits per festival perma-tee. If there's more than one festival perma-tee, because there's somebody from Swink shows up, somebody from Mankos shows up, nine each unless you decide, and it's in the list here, it's in one of the questions we're going to address, unless you decide that that number should be less.
Okay.
On the subject of the city's special event permitting process, which even though we use it for, for Carnation Festival and others, and I told you this is different, we'd like to use the same rules of the game, in terms of what you've got to submit and the reviews you've got to get from city departments, for all of these permits, not just the ones that end up on city property. Is there objection to that? In my opinion, that's almost the easiest question to answer. Why would you not, you know, put the Safeway parking lot event through the, the same process? Objections to that? Fair enough.
There are 92 liquor licensees currently in Wheat Ridge unless there's one or two that have come and gone in the last two weeks. So we could theoretically, any one of those 92 could have nine of these festival licenses.
Which is a, a good segue to question number one. See, Steve and I put this act together.
Mankos and Swink?
Mankos and Swink. Amanda has a question.
Counsel Hulteen, do we need to do this as one big consensus, or is this sort of a piece?
No.
So when, when he says, do you object, should we be doing a consensus?
Okay, fair question, fair question. It's, it's me, and I'm trying to move things along, it's my little style, but you're right, we act by consensus. And so that's, that's fine with me. If we just do, do a consensus on each one, I'll make a note, and, and then we're done. Consensus to, to require the, the, the city's special event guides to apply to all such permits? Objection to that consensus? No? Oh, sorry. Okay.
Just do consensus.
Do consensus, all right. Did that one pass? That one passed?
Yes.
Can I take us to, I think, Scott, did you have a question, or we can go through the numbered questions?
Yeah, I have, I have one question, and I don't know when it'll be appropriate time, but my first question is just that, you know, I, I kind of hear a little bit that maybe the city isn't 100% all-in for this special event venue, and if, if that's kind of the case, I'm looking, and what I've heard too is about, you know, cost recovery model, and there's some specific information about the cost recovery model. Could, the first question is, is could this cost recovery model be specific just for this special event? And the reason I ask that is, I'm looking at some of these numbers, and they just, they appear to be really low, you know, for instance, you know, $5 an hour for a police car seems, just in my opinion, it seems really low. So some of these fees on here are like, if somebody wanted to have a, an electric car event, that fee would only be $5 an hour, flat fee, and you, you know, if it was some type of special event for electric cars. And it just seems really low, and, and so I'm kind of curious, could we, could we have a different fee structure maybe for these special events if we're, a possibility of 10,000 people and, you know, electric car event?
Sure. We certainly could. One thing that I'm going to suggest is the, the elastic clause additional condition. You know, so you put together the program, and then you specifically authorize, and the Liquor Authority's authorized to impose such other or different terms and conditions as appropriate to the particular application. And, and because your example's a good one, and then the next one that comes in, we go, oh, we didn't think about that, you know, that's a little unusual. And so if you've got the elastic clause, it's a little like a special use permit. Once you've taken care of the five things that you always do, then you have that ability to add, you know, a term or condition that is specific to that particular animal, when it comes in and says, we want this Safeway parking lot with these many people, et cetera. And, and then you can better fashion a condition. So we can easily do that.
Yes.
of these, will take us, you know, a very long ways. And what is left are some things that are kind of specific to this particular application, such as the question I've got on number one here, should the festival permits be limited to persons holding a valid City of Wheat Ridge liquor license as opposed to the one that floats in? Pure policy question for you, and I can see it both ways. I can see you're saying, well, we're open for business if you want to come in from Federal Heights with your license and get a local license from us, fine. That does raise some enforcement problems, as I described. They screw up, the most you can do is revoke their festival permit license, but you can't revoke or deal with their H&R license in Federal Heights, because you, you don't have jurisdiction over that. You can assess a fine, but then you've got to send our police up there to try to serve that, you know, it's just harder. So discussion around that, because I think that is a, a pretty fundamental question. Mr. Mayor, are you going to call on people, or shall I?
You know, I think, why don't you, just for the, for the fluidity, why don't you go ahead and, and conduct sort of the Q and A?
I think, I think Mr. Stites had his first hand up, followed closely by Ms. Weaver, and after that by Ms. Hulteen, I think.
He's pretty good at calling the rice. How long does it take to get a liquor license in the city of Wheat Ridge typically?
A new liquor license? Steve, what do you think? Ah, I see where you're headed.
I thought it would take longer than a year and a half, because sometimes people are very slow in giving us the right opportunity. I say that fast as you're going to do, I'm sorry.
Are listening on TV.
Sorry. So focused on what we're talking about, I forgot to include everybody. You can get one in, in three or four months, particularly if you have a good attorney who will help you go through all of this. It's a very complex process, as you know.
Is there a way to speed up that process if somebody already has a liquor license in another jurisdiction or something like that, like they've already?
I don't think so, because a license is issued to a person at a location.
Okay. Yeah. And Steve is right, you know, a new liquor license is not administrative, that's got to go to a hearing in front of the Liquor Authority, so that's a notice and hearing. It's, if the application's nice and complete, you get yourself on the Liquor Authority's, you know, agenda pretty quick, and then it gets issued, and you're good. But I see maybe where you're headed with that. Amanda?
It is just my opinion, but I just think we should be more leaning towards Wheat Ridge businesses. We have a lot of great breweries and other providers, and so that would be my opinion that if we can keep it in Wheat Ridge, you know, as far as the sponsor, I guess, not, not that then others from around Colorado, is, am I understanding that right?
Yeah, they could join unless you say no.
Right, but it's the...
That actually might be a pretty good compromise. Your sponsor has to be a Wheat Ridge liquor licensee. You can have up to X number of additional licensees who may or may not have to hold a Wheat Ridge liquor licenses. I'm not trying to say that should be your rule, but that's one that maybe compromises...
I think it just keeps everybody honest, right? Because it's also, it's, it's giving favor to Wheat Ridge, but then it's also having somebody responsible. You know, sort of like, I, I don't have kids, but I hear if your own kid's there, and, you know.
That's the conclusion the Liquor Authority Board reached when it discussed that very question.
Ms. Hulteen?
Yeah.
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you. So I, I generally agree with what Ms. Weaver just said. My preference would be for local licensees. However, I do want to consider the case for why maybe being too restricted on that might not serve us. I mean, it could be that there are some, you know, interesting liquor licensees outside of Wheat Ridge who see Wheat Ridge as a great place to, you know, to have an event. And, and, you know, we, we as a city have, you know, we, we like drawing people here from outside our community, we like bringing in a diversity of opportunities for people within our community. So I think completely restricting it is difficult. You know, I think it would limit us from some of the, the things that, that could be exciting. You know, the ideas of a bunch of, you know, small barkeeps from across the state throwing, you know, that, that sounds like a bad scenario, but it also seems relatively unlikely. I, I, I'm open to the idea of having to partner with someone local. Additionally, just thinking about the constraints we'd have in terms of enforcement, we could also look at different economic models, that if the principal licensee or applicant is from outside of Wheat Ridge, that they have, you know, higher fees, it could be that they have, I don't know if anyone can hold deposits, but, I mean, there could be an administrative differential to that, you know, if they're that interested in the outside of Wheat Ridge, we can get to a yes, but it's with a little bit additional administrative investment on, on their part, and financial security to make sure that we've got follow-up.
I'm glad you mentioned the issue about partnering with a local licensee, understanding that, that if the council does make the rule that you've got to be, the, the prime licensee has to be local, that, you know, that doesn't preclude someone from out of town partnering with the, with a, a local licensee, but I also take your, your, your other point. Mr. Ohm, and then maybe on this one, we'll need to do a consensus, because there is a difference. You either say, yes, the main licensee has to be a Wheat Ridge licensee or not, and that's a policy call for the council, but I, I think the issues are clear. Mr. Ohm?
I agree with Councilman, we're Hulteen, that, I mean, I can see it both ways. You know, if, if you, if you're absolutely forced, I mean, unfortunately, there is no reciprocity of, if you have a state where you can basically go anywhere, now you have to get an individual local, and I'm just trying to imagine, I don't know, some type of festival that maybe it's a one-time thing, maybe it's something that's sort of, you know, running through the state, and what that would take to get individual liquor licenses, and, and in some ways, that kind of negates the reason why they got the, the one for the entire state in the first place. But I, I'd be in favor if they wanted to, we wanted to have them sponsor, have a, a local sponsor, that would be great. I don't know how many local sponsors would step up to, you know, hey, we're going to have a 10,000-person event, do you want to be a local sponsor? I'm not sure that, that those small local people would, would want to take on that responsibility. And I just think of some of the other financial questions, you know, do these, you know, do these special event licensees, do they have to have some type of huge general liability insurance? Is that part of that process?
The city requires sometimes indemnification only, if it's a small licensee, and, you know, real live insurance, if it's a larger event that, and, and that comes to my office all the time, and I see outside even of the liquor context. I'm constantly reviewing contracts and having to make recommendations about what level of insurance or indemnification should we require of, should the city require of the people we're contracting with, or the people to whom the city's granting licenses. And I, frankly, it's a sliding scale, and I try to evaluate the level of risk and, and the, frankly, the ability of the, of the person to acquire insurance against the, you know, and you, it's a, it's a sliding scale, but that's really where the other terms and conditions, elastic clause, I think, you know, protects you, because you're really going to be examining these on a one, you know, case-by-case basis. I don't expect we'll get a huge volume of them. I also believe, like everything else, you do your best, and then you see how it plays out for a year. This is not something, in my opinion, council, where we have to get it perfect. It's impossible to get it perfect, because we haven't had any yet. So any decision you make here isn't irreversible. Like, you do your best, you see what happens for a year, and doubtless there'll be some fine tuning. I think Ms. Weaver was next.
Thank you for saying that. I think that's a, that's a great way of looking at it. I do, I do like Counsel Hulteen's idea of, is there any option to, to have a differential of, of it would be a higher cost of an outsider coming in?
Yeah, actually, the statute, other than saying you can have a local permit, I then expected it to go on and say, but here's what that permit can and can't address, and here's, and it just says you can have a local permit. So, Doug, I don't legislate you if you're going to create this thing, and if you're going to say we're going to have a local permit, then if you did not intend for cities to have differential rates, et cetera, et cetera, you should have said it.
Right, right, right.
Because they didn't, so that means, that means that we can.
Understood, understood.
It is the council's choice, and it's a policy call, but I want to make it clear that there will be enforcement issues with non-Wheat Ridge licensees that are, that are not, you know, insurmountable, but it's a, really a different kind of relationship. And you guys make the call, and I think you're well aware of the choices either way. At some point, we, we should just do a consensus probably, and see what kind of direction you want to give around this. Your choices around that consensus are consensus to require a Wheat Ridge licensee to be the prime sponsor, out-of-state licensees may participate, or no requirement to be a Wheat Ridge licensee.
Thank you for...
Those are the two.
Yeah. Thanks for explaining that.
Sure. Anybody want to make a consensus? We'll see what happens.
Well, not quite yet, because I know Mr. Stites wants to say something, and I just had one other comment, because I think a couple, a couple people have said festivals of 10,000 people. And, and I think that there's all sorts of numbers that this could end up being, just so we have in our heads sort of what that looks like. If you think about even the property that I have, you know, what, what's... If you think about even the property that I have, you know, what, what's, what's the number of, for, for somebody who, who comes to me and says, I want to do X, you know, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, it's not just the Carnation Festival I want us to have in our heads. You should have any sort of quasi-even private event that, that maybe a liquor producer is courting other industry people. So, so, yeah, just to kind of get in our heads that it's not just the traditional festival, it might be things, um, all, all sorts of things, is, is what you've said. Thanks.
Mr. Seitz?
To go back to my first question, sorry, how much does it cost typically to get a liquor license?
All that would be, it's right around fifteen hundred dollars to stay in the city. Now, there are all kinds of add-ons and fee charges and so forth, but don't take that number of living expenses or anything.
But most of that is paid to the city that you're in?
Yeah, no, it's not paid to the state.
Okay.
The state is lower the cost of a liquor license.
Okay. So, I, I agree with Ms. Hulteen and Ms. Weaver on this. I, I don't think that we should preclude people from coming in and doing festivals, but I do think that people who have a liquor license in the city of Wheat Ridge have paid kind of for that here. So, I don't know that we should be bringing in people for free, essentially, to come in and, and, and run, run festivals. So, I do think that either they need to partner up, or we should have a higher fee schedule for people who are coming in from outside to, to, to do that, because I think that makes sense, because people are paying for that right to have that, so.
Okay, that's probably the next consensus after you've decided, uh, whether you need to have a local licensee slash sponsor, but I think it's, Ms. Nosler back had her hand up.
Well, and maybe this is the next consensus then, but I just, I, I think it makes a lot of sense, especially with the, um, the, you know, the permit, pro, pro, or, I'm sorry, with the liquor license, this, this city getting some money out of the whole, the whole permit liquor licensing, um, that we should make it so that if you're a Wheat Ridge business and you're sponsoring or you're hosting the event, then there's no additional charge, but that if you are, uh, um, the, the thing that should, you know, be, um, what the, the cost is to have one of these events in Wheat Ridge, it should just be whatever the state would get from our liquor license when someone, so like, if it's $1,500 or $700, I mean, that just seems like a, a number that would make sense. Once again, sorry, I'm not making a lot of sense, but...
You're making sense to me.
Okay, I want to...
If I may, um, another thing we could do is that if you have a local liquor licensee who's applying for the permit, the fee schedule looks like this. If nobody from Wheat Ridge is participating, then the fee schedule was higher, and it looks like this. Does that make sense? Because I think what that would do is encourage licensees from other parts of the state to involve some business here in Wheat Ridge, so that our local business would realize revenue from that.
Okay, it's, it's Ms. Weaver, and then I'm going to see if I can force you to make a consensus, because otherwise, we're going to keep adding combinations and permutations till 10:00 PM. So, I'm going to ask for consensus in a minute.
Okay, I think that sounds great. I would just ask that the cost for someone coming from outside Wheat Ridge, because to Mr. Dahl's point of the fact that there's no, uh, enforcement if they come and don't behave the way we want them to behave. So, I would just want that fee to be commensurate, so that the, the encouragement would be to, to work with a local...
Okay, thank you. Um, so, so I keep going to the, what is it that we actually hope to have happen and not what are we afraid might happen? And when I look at this, you know, there's economic development opportunities here for businesses we might want to be attracting to the Clear Creek Development or to Lutheran when it comes in. We've got some significant infill that's going to be coming in around the TOD and at 44th and Kipling. So, I think, I, I just want to be mindful, I think it's good to elevate the cost threshold to cover some of the risks that the city takes on. I like the idea of encouraging them to partner with local businesses, but if we've got businesses from around the state that are looking at Wheat Ridge as a place where they might want to be doing business, this is an opportunity for them to kind of test our community a little bit. So, I, I don't want to be complet, I, I want to be mindful about not being fear-based in this, but also look at, this could also be economic development. And I'm seeing this in that there's other decisions we've got coming up where I think we can put a much more restrictive environment in place to make sure people aren't taking advantage of this by limiting the number of permits that they can take. There's a lot of other, like, consensuses that are coming forward that I think can constrain the city from being taken advantage of, but I'm actually, I want to be open to it as an economic development opportunity for businesses that we'd like to be attracting to our city. So, that's, I'm, I'm done.
How about this on the, on the question? I've heard from, I think, from a majority that's here, so let me suggest what the consensus is. Somebody can say, so moved, and we'll see if it passes, that what I'm hearing is the consensus is headed toward permitting, uh, non-Wheat Ridge liquor licensees to be the primary applicant, and request the liquor licensing authority to recommend a differential fee schedule for, uh, the applicants, depending upon whether they are the primary applicant, whether they're a, a Wheat Ridge licensee or a licensee from elsewhere. That would be the consensus if, if we're taking notes. Looks like that passed. So, that took care of two issues at, at once, you'll notice.
Sorry, repeat that one more time.
That passed.
Not bad.
You want me to repeat all the stuff I said? Really? Okay, the consensus was to permit, uh, um, uh, non-Wheat Ridge liquor licensees to, to be the primary sponsor, uh, and to the, and to request that the liquor licensing authority recommend a differential fee schedule, uh, as between a Wheat Ridge licensee as the prime sponsor and an out-of-city liquor licensee as the prime sponsor, and get recommendations on actual numbers from the liquor licensing authority rather than invent them here. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
That takes me to question number two on Joe's list, and we've actually taken some of the others already, so we're getting close. Should the number of licensees to participate, how big should this party be? Different question, isn't it? And the statute doesn't have a limit, uh, at all. It's got a limit on number of festivals for an individual permutee, which we're going to get to next, so save your thoughts on that. Save your thoughts on that. But the issue is, should there be an upper limit, uh, on the number of licensees that are participating in the festival? And it's, Ms. Weaver is first.
Oh, the number of licensees or the number of people?
Number of, I meant this, I meant it to be the same thing. The number of licensees. When I said people, I meant licensees.
Oh, okay, so, the number of liquor dis...
Licensees that can...
Distribution.
Yeah, liquor licensees that can show up at the festival, because I assume the concept here is, I'm the sponsor, I'm a, I'm either a local licensee or I'm not, and I've gotten the comments base out of Clear Creek Crossing, and I'm going to invite five other, five, you know, two breweries, uh, two tavern licensees, and an H&R.
Does it matter?
That, I'm asking you. So, should there be an upper limit on the number of liquor licensees that are kind of, it's almost like a food court, and when you think about it at this point?
Sure, sure.
Do you want a limit or not? That's my question.
So, are, are special, are permits for events? Do you require people to, is it based on the number of people attending and the space they have?
That's an excellent question. The way we, we eliminate with a special event permit is, how many people can you reasonably put in the space you have? So, if you wanted to rent all that open land out there, 44th and Wazworth, you could argue, we could have 5,000 people out there, after they mow that lot off of weed patches out there.
But the question in front of us is not the number of attendees. That's not the question I'm asking.
No, I, I understand that. I understand that. I don't think it matters if we are regulating the number of people on the space in other ways, via parking, safety, all those other things.
Yeah, oh, I see where you're headed, okay.
Then I would, I, my opinion would be that it doesn't matter if we're regulating the other things.
Other thoughts, Councilmember Ohm?
I would say it doesn't matter. I, I attended some specific brewery festivals between Arvada and Fort Collins, and, and at the end of the day, it's, it's, you could handle legally small amounts and, and be legal. That, that, so it wasn't the issue of having multiple vendors. It's, it's, I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Everything else needs to be legal.
That's helpful. Other comments on that, or this consensus might be easy?
So, Mr. Dahl?
Yeah.
These, um, these liquor, liquor distributors or liquor vendors can come from anywhere in the state, the United States, the world?
Any, anywhere in the state.
Anywhere within the state of Colorado.
Yes.
And, and usually, uh, Steve, we, we regulate liquor authority by your license, is that right? It's by being able to bring the hammer down on your license.
Correct.
So, what, what kind of hammer would we have on these licensees outside of the city of Wheat Ridge?
Uh, we have...
A bond or a guarantee or a lick and a promise?
The good, that's, all three of those are...
All three of those are...
No licks.
Okay.
I'll tell you what you, I'll say what you don't have, and then what I think you do have. You do not have, if they're out-of-city licensees, any control over their license. You have the control over the license issued for their festival permit here, which you could revoke, but, uh, you don't have sort of the, the control we have over a liquor licensee in the city, that's their livelihood, that's their business forever here, and it's a one-off. And again, you've made your choice, and I'm comfortable with it, but you should know, it's a one-off in terms of the threat to take away the festival permit, because, okay, fine, I'm going to go back to, to Steamboat Springs or Oak Creek and keep running my business there, and I'm fine. You do have fine authorities, says the statute, uh, and there's, you know, we can certainly say to the sponsor who's from Oak Creek, hi, you owe us $1,000, and if they don't pay, we'll have to chase them harder than if they're a local liquor licensee who is not paying a fine, they're not going to get renewed, and so they're going to pay the fine. That leads me to door number three, which the mayor mentioned, which is bond. And so, you're going to have to look carefully, especially if it's an out-of-city licensee, at the bonding requirements that you, that you build into the, uh, the festival permit license, which you can do per the dialogue I had with Councilmember Ohm about the additional terms and conditions. So, that would be where it would have to reside.
Yeah, you know, I, one, one thing about it, I hold a liquor license in the city of Wheat Ridge, and it's not, it's not just the fee, it's not just the time, it's your reputation and your goodwill and your credibility that you sign up for when you take that license out. So, all of the other licensees that we have in the city of Wheat Ridge have gone through that process. So, if we're going to let other vendors come into our town to sell the same kind of product as a, as a competitor to our local merchants, we've got to understand that.
Yes.
Because while they're buying beer or liquor at this, at this festival, they're not coming to my restaurant, they're not going to Colorado Plus or the other vendors that are in our, in our city, potentially. We don't, I agree with everything you said, Mr. Mayor. Two things to add to that. One, there is also a state liquor license. So, if a licensee from El Paso County comes up here and misbehaves, we could go back to the state. Would the state enforce it? Based on my two years of experience dealing with the Liquor Enforcement Division, no. They recently changed their whole charter. They're no longer liquor enforcement. They're supposed to support the development of more liquor licensees and more commerce in the state. The second thing I would add is, if we have licensees from other parts of the state, the only hammer we're really going to have is A, a fine, or B, you're precluded forever from coming back to Wheat Ridge. At, at that point, if they've already violated the, you know, the terms of their permit, what are we going to do other than that? That's, I, I think it's a serious question. If we have a local licensee sponsor, that's a different kettle of fish, because now, of course...
Uh, well, we have consensuses so far on these topics, and let me take you to number three, which is, should the number of festivals permitted be limited to a number less than nine? And let me give you the background for that, which is that, w, once you have a festival permit, festival license, and you're either from town or you're not, but once you've got a festival license, says the statute, you can have up to nine events, festival events, in a 12-month period. So, it's a little like, to use the, the amplified sound ordinance, remember, where you get your ticket punched for X number of, of, of events. And there's, there's sort of two pieces to this question. The statute clearly says may have up to nine, which clearly leaves room for you to say, no, it's just one, or it's three per licensee. There's two ways to slice it. One is to, to, uh, say, once you've got your permit, you can have up to five events. Obviously, you got to let us know you're coming in for the next event and the next event, and we can build conditions around that, et cetera. Or you can say, you've got to get a separate permit for each time you want to come in here. And, and I kind of favor that because frankly, the, the, the conditions may change, and the second event might be a lot bigger, or even if they're all supposed to be the same and at the same location, you sure learned a lot on that first event, that you really would like to build into the permit for the second event, et cetera. So, that, that we certainly have discussion, or I could suggest maybe the consensus is that a permit is required for each event. No permutee to receive more than X permits in a calendar year. So...
Thank you. Um, I definitely support that we permit each event, because it, we're going to be, we are going to learn, each event's going to be different. And, and I think that, especially since we're rolling this out. My thoughts, I, nine seems like way too many permits. Can't even imagine, like, who would be doing that and what that looks like. I, I like the idea of having a very low number limit for non-Wheat Ridge permities, so if you are not a local liquor license holder, that you're limited to one or two maximum permits a year. Again, we want to maybe encourage some people from outside Wheat Ridge to bring good ideas here, but we don't want them to usurp our existing licensees, so I'd like to be very restrictive in that arena on people outside of Wheat Ridge. And then even within Wheat Ridge, I, I can't see more than five. And I don't know, I'm having a hard time imagining where that number nine came up with, but I'd like a very, very restrictive limit on outside of Wheat Ridge licensees and a little bit more liberal, but still less than nine for inside of Wheat Ridge.
Okay, it's, it's, Ms. Dozeman? Nope? Okay, I, I think it was Mr. Seitz.
I would agree with everything that Ms. Hulteen just said, and I was going to say four, because I was just thinking one per quarter for people who have their license here in the city.
Would you be inclined to make that a consensus that says that you have to have a, a separate permit for each festival, that local licensees may have an, may have up to nine permits in a calendar year, and out-of-town licensees would have the ability to have no more than...
Can, well, can we do a consensus that it's an individual permit per event?
Yep.
Local licensees can have four licenses per year, or four events per year, and non-local can have two?
If that's your consensus? One, two, three, four, five, six, six and, uh, okay, so it's four and two?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm going to write down. Remembering, in a year, you really can adjust this. You can adjust it sooner. Now, you have to recommend to the liquor licensing authority that they promulgate the regulations, because they're the ones actually implementing. It's a little different than the ordinance process where I'll bring you an ordinance. Okay.
Mr. Dahl, did you get consensus on question number two, or are we coming back to it? Should the number of licenses, licensees permitted to participate in slash sponsor a festival be limited?
I, I thought we got a consensus that the answer was no, unlimited. I, I thought we got a consensus that the answer was no, unlimited.
We did do that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Okay, let's see here. Um, I think we already covered the, uh, one application for multiple festivals. Uh, two, two questions, the only ones left for me are, uh, five and six, which food service requirements apply to the festival. And, um, the, that reference there is to a, a separate provision in the, in the liquor code. And I guess what I would suggest for, for that is, I'm not really ready to ask you for consensus, because I don't have a recommendation. I think that's something Liquor Authority can certainly recommend, in terms of food service requirements per, for, for festivals. And on balance, I think probably that will vary, per Councilmember O'Me's, O'Me's point about the fact that the festivals themselves will vary in size greatly. Um, and number six is really just informational. What's the process? The, that describes the state licensing authority's procedure. For the local procedure, I would, I would suggest it's no different than applying for a new license, yeah, because it's a new license in the city. Even if it's an existing city licensee, they're applying for a festival permit, which it's, is, and there's a, we'll develop an application form for it. Liquor Authority's already done a pretty good job, I think. I'm trying to think, uh, the one consensus I'd like, even though we've talked about it a lot, is, uh, Councilmember O'Me's suggestion that, that the, the regulations make clear something that we usually assume, which is that the Liquor Licensing Authority may apply, may impose, uh, additional or other conditions, terms and conditions, specific to the individual application. And that can cover everything from food service to food health, to police protection, to bonding, et cetera. But kind of an, an elastic clause ability, we think ought to be plugged into the regs, so that the, any licensee can't object that that's not a condition that's in the list. We say, it is in the list by virtue of its being an elastic clause. Somebody can make that consensus, and then I know Councilmember Weaver has another question.
I just don't wanna skip over the food stuff, because that is another key thing of, of competition in, in Wheat Ridge, right?
Okay.
Like, if you have a festival, and you don't have the same food regs that all of us who have, who run commercial kitchens have, that's, you know, so, so it should be the same kinds of regulations that the, that the Carnation Festival has, where any, any food vendor, even if they're also a liquor vendor, has to abide by all-state festival food distribution, health and safety laws. And those are standard.
Okay. And, and actually, since you, you've already said, um, the special event permit standards that we use for special event permits, like the Carnation Festival, should apply across the board to the, this new animal. Will that address-
I don't think it does, because, because those of us who, who, who work in the commercial kitchen environment, it's actually a separate set of rules.
Okay.
And so I just wanna make sure that, that by not talking about them-
Okay.
-that they're the same ones that, that, uh, the mayor's held to, that I'm held to, that anybody who's, who's putting food out there, and according to your license, you can also go to a festival, but you also have to, per the county, have to have the appropriate, um, help me out with the words, uh, the, the appropriate permits to, to take your goods and sell them on a different location.
A food handler's license, or, yeah, something like that.
Food handler's license, yes. So just like, if I go outside my commercial kitchen, even on my property, I, it has to be served in a particular way.
Okay, so a consensus around that would be?
Uh, that they have to uphold the same standards as any, uh, outside food vendor. They're, the county health, the county, Jeffco County Health has rules around festival food vending.
Okay.
Can anybody, well, works with the-
I was just gonna say, I mean, if we're, if we're, if we're saying that, that, which you all consented to, that our current special event permit plan still, still applies, right? This is covered. This is covered. So-
It is, okay.
Yeah, number nine on the current application, food and retail sales, event organi-, I won't read it, but it basically, they have to show their Colorado State Food Retail License, state sales tax account, and then Jeffco Public Health Certificate approving temporary retail food service. So I think, plus a business license for Wheat Ridge.
Great.
I think, I think that addresses your concerns.
Sometimes what happens at some of these festivals is, some of the alcohol producers have also served food, but not under an, an actual food license. And so they cut into the competition of the food producers, per the mayor's comment before. So I just wanted to make sure that we talked about that.
Great. Um, I'd like to go ahead and ask for a consensus that we authorize the, uh, Liquor Licensing Authority to include an elastic clause, is that what you said?
Yeah.
That grants them the ability to, um, require additional, uh, bonding, or just terms and conditions for their permit fee as they see suitable for the event. Great. Um, I have one thing that, when I was going through this, that, uh, kind of stood out to me. Because we are allowing the main applicant to have other, um, vendors and licensees, one of the things that I noticed in there is that there's nothing that, um, there's, there was a page where you could list them, but there was nowhere on there that the applicant was, um, affirming that that was the complete list of who was on there. So just some sort of language that's holding them to say that that is the, the, you know, whole and complete list of additional licensees, and, um, that it's the applicant, and I'm not the lawyer here, but something that is, I'm not a lawyer, but I play one on Monday nights now, is, is something that is reminding the applicant that the applicant's actually responsible for the, you know, the, the performance and behavior of the other licensees that are on there. Um, but I, my concern is, is, I, I'm very much support them being able to have other licensees there, but, you know, sometimes, you know, they start out with, like, three that all have the idea, and they're gonna start, and then they put the permit in, and then they get three more that are interested in coming, and they show up and aren't really part. So just to make sure that that permit is, is complete and reflective of everyone who's gonna be there, and that no one else that's not on that application is allowed to participate.
Mr. Dahl?
Yeah.
Would these vendors, uh, get a Wheat Ridge business license, and then would they collect and remit sales taxes to the city?
Yeah. That's a good question.
Do we have a temporary, sorry. Do, do we have a temporary business license?
Yeah.
That's a good question. That hasn't come up on the radar screen, but if they're, they're, they're selling their products at this festival, they're, they're conducting business in the city. Uh, and whether they're out there for a festival, or they just showed up and rented the Safeway parking lot to do that, uh, leaving even alcohol aside, they would need to get a permit-
Yeah.
-from the city.
This, the, I mean, all the Carnation Festivals, anyone that, that's vending gets a temporary. And actually, we do send our revenue auditor out to check compliance. So I think we could get a good answer on this for, um, so for example, let's say it's a ticketed event, but individual vendors aren't selling. I think we can do a little research into that.
And I will say that the special event permit documentation, as you, you've noticed from looking at it, requires a sign-off from zoning, from the police department. So for example, if it's a, it just simply can't take place on that property as a matter of zoning, then no. And we'll check and make sure that the same thing is true for other business activities that have to be separately licensed, separate apart from liquor. Okay?
And, and we do, um, Mr. Dahl, we are, the, the finance folks are the, are a referral in the process, yeah.
Okay, great. Re- regarding Councilmember Holtein's, a question about the, the actions of the associated licensees, maybe the, the way to frame that in a consensus was, would be that the regulations should provide that the, the applicant licensee, uh, must represent that they, that they're responsible for the actions of all the associate, associated licensees, and that the, uh, list of associated licensees may not vary from, uh, that represented in the application. So, consensus on that? Okay, that checks that box. I don't have any other boxes to check, but Councilmember O'Me does.
Yeah, I just have one, I have one question. So from the public's point of view, the public shows up for the festival, and, and the, uh, the perma-te for the special event, they've done all the paperwork, and they have what I would call subs, uh, sub-permites that are working with them. Um, so what would the public see? Would, would they, is there just gonna be, like, a one temporary license that's on the first special event, whatever vehicle, or, or something, and then, and then there's something else that the public knows, like, yeah, all these people have been permitted? Or is it gonna be a copy of the same number on ten, you know, vehicles or, or something?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, we're down at the import, administrative, but important level. Uh, it's a question I'll ask. I don't think it bears a consensus, but it's, but it's sort of, what's the public face of this event? And if I am a attendee, and I'm upset for some reason, how do I, you know, who am I complaining about? That, I pursue, I perceive that. Uh, it might be helpful for the Liquor Authority to hear that, uh, you have directed that, or have asked that they make these changes, and, uh, would you like to see or not see a revision before they go into sort of implementation mode on this?
How often do they meet?
Twice a month.
Twice a month.
Next meeting, we're, do we have a meeting this, this coming Thursday, but there will be one on, uh, Thursday, two weeks later.
And will they be able-
No, I got that wrong. It's the second and fourth Thursday.
Okay. Will they be able to take, is there space on their agenda, they'd be able to take up?
Oh, yes. They're very, they're very anxiously waiting to get started.
So I think it'll be pretty quick, then. So within a month, they should be ready to generate the paperwork that if I wanted as a licensee to apply, I could, I, the paperwork would be available.
And the sooner we do it, the sooner we have the, you know, we actually create the need for applying for a permit, because right now, they don't have to.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll just share that my interest is in getting this, uh, in place as quickly as possible. And, uh, council, you may be aware, but we have very limited study session, uh, time in the next couple of months, and limited meeting space. So, uh, I'll just say, I'm comfortable with the direction we've given. Uh, just if, when that, when the final revisions come forward, if you could just share it with council, so that we can just see what that looks like. But I don't, I don't feel the need for us to discuss it again.
Very good. In the absence of a consensus to bring it back to you, it won't come back other than, uh, reports of suc-, great success as, as it evolves. Councilmember Stites?
The one thing I would like to know is, in a year or so, did we get any requests for any of these permits?
Yeah.
For one, but, uh, how, how-
Yeah, I think it'd be very interesting to see if, if there's a lot of interest, no interest. Uh, I'm sure there'll be tweaks. I have no idea what they'll be.
Just as a matter of context, um, back out of the weeds, big picture, what happened is, when COVID hit, and the state started allowing restaurants to sell margaritas in a plastic cup to go for the first time, of course, the liquor licensees wanted that process to continue. And so the state extended that for, I forgot now, long, three or four years? You know, do you know about it?
I don't know, because we didn't go off premises.
It's a while out yet. What really inspired this festival business was the brewers and the distillers, who have been confined to their local area to hold, you know, marketing events for their product. So all of the, um, all of the vineyards out in Brand County can't have a festival somewhere else. That's really what this is about. We do in Wheat Ridge have a handful of licenses issued to people who either make fermented malt beverages, in other words, beer and ale, and we have a couple who make, uh, liquor. We have a new group coming into the city who have applied for a license, and we granted it, they're just waiting for ATF to approve, and then they're gonna start making liquor in Wheat Ridge. So those are the businesses that are most likely to be interested in this.
Mr. Dahl?
I'm guessing we'll have a few, but I don't think we're gonna have fifty by any means.
Mr. Dahl, I had one more question. When it talks about the licensed premises, now, is that the licensed premises as expanded by the, and I don't know, the, the ability to, to occupy the public right of way to sell these things, or is this the permitted process of your-
Uh, yes, that's using language out of the special event, uh, permit process. So it will be clearly, because that's, that's the nature of a floating license, you know, it'll float away from the distillery in Fort Collins, and, and the area where they'll be able to serve will be as delineated in the boundary shown in their application, that has gotta have, you know, security or ID, just like we, we do for special event permits. Uh, and the, the same kind of concerns arise, because you don't have solid walls, of course, and, and for those kinds of special event permits, you have, you know, you use construction fencing, or, you know, the yellow tape, or, there's an event in Morrison where they paint lines on the, literally on the, on the pavement, and use barricades and whatnot. But that would be the licensed area where they'd be able to actually serve.
Okay.
Counsel?
He says, he said, he said, um, usually there are ropes and stanchions to serve here.
And that, that emphasizes why the police department's review of all of these applications, not just the ones on city property, I think is so important. Counsel, I appreciate your time on this. I'll, I'll, I'll hand things over to the next agenda item.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that takes us through agenda item number two. So now, let's go to staff reports. Ally, do we have a staff report tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, good evening, everybody. Um, just a, a quick update. Um, obviously, I, I know that you've all been thinking about those affected to the north of us, and some of you here are very personally affected. Um, I just wanted to let you all know that we're, we're, we're sort of on hot standby. We're doing some work to support those communities right now. For example, our, some of members of our police department have been up there, um, the last two nights, helping with both traffic control and scene control. Um, PIO and Communications Manager Sarah Spalding, um, did a, took a shift today for, for PIO to help. They have sort of a, um, a collaboration among all the communities, so she was helping out with that. And otherwise, we're, we're standing by and ready to help when these, when these communities need it. And it's gonna be a little bit of time before they figure out really what they, what they need, and, and ways that, um, professional staff can, can sort of pitch in. So, um, just know that we, we appear to be very fortunate from our staff here in Wheat Ridge. Um, we, we happen, while we draw from all over the metro, we have very few employees who live in Superior or Lewisville. We do have some that were, um, on pre-evacuation notices. Um, but those, we don't happen to live in those communities. Um, so we, we, we did a quick check of that. At least, that's what we've heard so far. I know they're all affected in different ways. Um, and then just, uh, lastly, I just wanted to mention that, um, obviously, you had some alarming numbers today from Jeffco Public Health. We too, inside our organization, are seeing, um, increased cases here in Wheat Ridge. At the moment, we don't have, as you know, we're not under any stay-at-home or restrictions, um, where we've instructed supervisors to please limit onsite staff as much as possible, um, while providing full coverage and full levels of service. So currently, that's our goal, but we are seeing increased cases, even a handful more today. So we'll keep you posted. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we will go to elected officials matters. Uh, Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. Uh, to, to Ms. Scheck's point, I just wanna take a quick temperature from council to see if there is any interest in exploring going virtual for a short term while this COVID wave passes. Um, is there any interest from council in having that discussion? All right. Um, then, uh, my two comments tonight, I know we're all a little tired. Um, first of all, I just wanna share, I was just absolutely, like, heartbroken by the trees at Anderson Park that somebody cut down for their Christmas trees. I just thought that was just horrifying. If anyone sees anyone doing anything to our city's trees, uh, call the police immediately. That just absolutely, like, just really made me angry. Um, and then just a reminder, Jefferson County is doing its point-in-time count in two weeks from today. Uh, unfortunately, it starts while we will be meeting on Monday night, but there are Tuesday morning shifts available. And, uh, I've done it a couple of times. It's a really, uh, high-impact volunteer opportunity for us to help inform the needs of people experiencing homelessness, um, and for us to, I, I learned a lot from doing personal outreach and hearing the stories of people, and why they are where they are, and what their needs are. So, um, if you have an opportunity to, uh, volunteer for that, I highly encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Steve?
Just, I thank you-
Just a thank you once again to our Public Works Department. We've come to expect the cleanest streets in Jefferson County. That does not in any way dull the notion that they're there every time, working whatever hours it takes, and I just want to express our appreciation for that, because how many accidents do we prevent, lives do we save? Because they do their job.
Here, here. Additional elected officials matters. Mr. Oms?
Yeah, I just want to share some sentiment about those trees. I was pretty disappointed as soon as I heard about it. I did a little research and forwarded that to Patrick, about some preventative measures that maybe the city could use in the future. And then I also just wanted to just give a quick shout-out to Edwards Meats. I withstood the long lines right up before Christmas. They were pretty efficient in moving people in and out, so I'm really thankful that we, we have them as a business in the city.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a devastating week, in more ways than one. And it was even very difficult to sleep after hearing about the fires and, you know, my, my thoughts and concerns for all the people. I mean, it's just devastating, but I also think that maybe lessons can be learned from this, one way or another. We have no water. And, you know, when I think, we talk about sustainability, and we also talk about growth, I think that's an oxymoron, because the climate is changing, there's always been winds, and it seems to be getting worse. So I think we just have to, you know, be aware that things are changing, and, and we really don't have water. It's very concerning to me. And I also, I was talking to Ally, cannot the city of Wheatridge donate some money to Boulder County?
Well, I was going to, I was going to bring that up. As you know, I, I chair the Metro Mayor's Caucus, which is 38 communities in the metro, seven-county metro area. We've, we've asked our member cities if they would make a donation of $1,000 that we would give to the Boulder County OEM Wildlife or Wildfire Fund, and I wanted to see if council was, was in favor of that type of a donation. And I would take a consensus on that, and I don't know whether, whether we need to do anything else. Is that, is that enough to fund, or?
Yeah, either we can, I'm included in the budget, I'll bring it back for a supplemental, and I'll talk to Patrick about that, but we'll make this happen.
Okay.
And this is outside of your outreach funds, correct?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that greatly. Thanks so much. Counselor Weaver? Just get the name.
Just on top of what Councilmember Hutchinson said, I've been talking with other animal owners in Wheatridge, and that's something that, you know, you, you hope and pray that it's never going to come into the city like it did. And so I don't, I don't know if this is something that, that we can do in cooperation with the city and with extension, with Jeffco Extension, but, but I, I'm going to be trying to organize people to, they have extension agents that will come out and train people on how to create an evacuation plan for animals, and, and for, you know, whether it's chickens or goats, or, or dogs, but just having those packs available, or, or just people in your house for evacuation, because that was certainly something that, it, it was close, and, and it, and it could happen here too. So I don't know, do, do I need a consensus on that, or is that, is that something that I, who can I reach out to, or is there anyone on council who's interested in sort of helping me organize that?
Well, I'm happy to work with you on it if you're looking for volunteers.
All right, well, I'll, I'll reach out to you guys. Oh, very good, okay. Okay, very good, thanks.
I'll tell you, this puts a whole new, new view on, on sort of wildfire risk, you know, I never, I never really thought about this as a, as a potential, and I think it's very real. Ms. Noslerbeck?
I've been working with some other metro area city counselors to do a gift card drive with an organization called Team Rubicon. Team Rubicon is a group of veterans that come in after disaster hits and do recovery efforts. And so they're organizing gift cards, and we'll have some more information about that. But I do know that, I talked to Counselor Stites, and one of the drop-off locations for those gift cards will be at, at, can, can you remind me of Personal Achievement Martial Arts, and also at Colorado Plus? So more info to come on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there additional matters to come before our study session tonight? Okay. With that, we're back here in a week. We have a very busy meeting next Monday night, 7:00, so have a good week, and we'll see you all next week. We are adjourned.